All right, let's get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June 26, 2023 Winchester Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michael Bettencourt, we have Michelle Pryor on the telephone, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We will start this evening with the acceptance of donations.
I'm moving except with gratitude to ARPA Stabilization Grants to the Recreation Department, June dispersal amount in the amount of $16,333.33 to be used for the Wrap Kid Connection, and the other in the amount of $5,416.67 to be used for the Lunch After School Program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving except with gratitude to donation of $750 from the Winchester Cooperative Bank to the Recreation Department for the Concerts on the Common.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving except with gratitude to an in-kind donation of a treadmill from the Winchester First Responders Fund for the gym in the Public Safety Building.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was a great fundraiser they did, and glad to see they're putting that money to good use. Beth, do you want to do your report?
Sure. So a few, starting off with a few personnel updates. We have two longstanding department heads who are retiring at the end of June this year. So we have our Treasurer Collector Sheila Tracy, and as well as our Building Commissioner Al Wile, who'll be retiring on Friday. So I hope everyone will join me in congratulating them on their new endeavors in retirement. I'll get to the appointments in just a minute, but we had, we advertised for the Treasure Collector position. We had a couple really great interviews, and I've appointed our current Assistant Treasure Collector, Anne Gill, to the position of Treasure Collector. So I'll officially announce that during the appointment phase. But Ms. Gill comes to us, she's worked in the town since 2021, and she previously worked as the Treasure Collector in Georgetown, Mass., and the Assistant Treasure Collector in Toffsfield. So she has some, some good experience. So we're happy, happy to have her come on board in that role. I'm also currently interviewing for the Building Commissioner position. We had interviews last week, and we'll be bringing a couple candidates back for a second interview after the July 4th holiday. And in the meantime, we have a retired Building Commissioner Inspector who's worked in other communities, who's willing to come back and help us out on a part-time basis. He worked here in the town last fall when Mr. Wile was out for a few weeks. So he is familiar with the town and works well with staff. So I appreciate his willingness to help us out. The next piece is, I just want to mention, we have, working with the Health Department, we've talked about some of the ARPA funds that were previously approved by the Board. So you had, in total, you'd approved $466,635 in ARPA funds for the Health Department related to COVID-19 response and other community services. To date, they've expended just over $184,000, which leaves a balance of just about $233,000. Given that we've now had the end of the COVID state of emergency, the Health Director feels that that balance can be reduced, but she would like to retain approximately $75,000 towards future COVID-related supplies and other professional services. So when we have a broader discussion about ARPA on meeting in July, we'll, I'll come back to you to have that, that vote, that funding re-voted into the ARPA funding pool.
Quick question. Did we appropriate money for, you know, COVID-related materials in the budget, in the Health Department's budget? Is this, or is it?
No, it's all, it's, yeah.
Okay.
It's through the, it's all through the ARPA funds. Yep. We had a successful meeting on June 14th to review the transportation plan. We had our representatives from Tool held a great public information meeting. We had about 50 people who attended. So we have a very comprehensive document that's up on the town's website right now for those who might be interested in reviewing it. And we have, we've actually put it out for public comment. Through the end of June, there's a form that people can use to fill out and put any questions that they have or comments they have on the plan. So please, if anybody has any thoughts on that plan, we're welcome. We're happy to hear any feedback before we finalize the plan over the next few months. I just wanted to mention that I was very lucky to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new bathhouse at the Shannon Beach. It's a phenomenal structure and really great recreation facility for our community and for the surrounding region, if folks have a chance to get out there. So the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the new Head of the Department of Conservation and Recreation are out there, as well as the family of Senator Charles Shannon. So very, very nice morning out there. Very briefly, the Health Department has new COVID-19 bivalent booster doses available by appointment. You can contact the Health Department at the, our Public Health Nurse Karen De Campo. The vaccine is recommended for folks aged six, six months and older, and those folks aged 65 should consider getting a second bivalent booster dose as well. Our construction season is ramping up now that school is out and summer has started. So Eversource is going full tilt on the, on the 345 KB project. The work is primarily focused on Cross Street, and they'll be starting their, their horizontal directional drill over the next few weeks. Eversource has completed construction on the 115 project, and they are doing, will be finishing up their pavement markings on Main Street between Sims Corner and the Medford Line in the coming weeks. The Lake Street Bridge Project has started up. We have National Grid out there currently looking, doing a temporary relocation of the gas main, and then we're looking to close the bridge down fully either the week of July 12th, excuse me, July 17th, or July 24th. So I'll have, we'll have a lot, we'll know more after the job meeting this Wednesday, and then we'll be doing a public information campaign for folks, putting out flyers, doing reverse 911, handing out flyers at transfer station, doing everything we can to get the word out about the recommended detour route for that project. Parker's Marjorie classrooms are moving along. Construction has finally started at the intersection of Woodstead Road and Wildwood Street. So that project hopefully will be done sometime in mid to late August. Four roof evaluation is ongoing, as well as the evaluation work for the Town Hall and Library Windows. We, we expect to be bidding in the coming months, or the coming weeks, the McDonald Field Pump Station project, which is the project necessary to improve the water pressure to the folks on Arbella and Wendell. The Washington Cross Street Bridge Project will be, bid opening is scheduled for June 28th. And then the Winchester High School Drainage Project, we had bid, and that bid opening was held early this month, and unfortunately received no bidder. So we'd be putting that project back out to bid. And there's a few other projects that will be starting up, smaller projects that'll be starting up later this month. But that's, that's it, all I had. Happy to take any questions.
Any further questions for Beth on her report?
Yeah. Beth, you just, I think skipped over the transfer station renovation.
Yeah.
What's the abatement permit on that?
So when they did the demolition of the incinerator building, there was some additional asbestos-containing material that they found, and so that has to go through a DEP permitting process before it can be disposed of. So we're just waiting on that permit before we can move forward with the final paving and other, and Bob, if I'm, if I'm missing anything or misspoke, please jump in, but, yeah. Anything? Okay. So I'll just go through the appointments very quickly. So I have a few this evening. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works to Water and Sewer Special Equipment Operator of David Pratt from Woburn, and I respectfully request that the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint David Pratt to the Water and Sewer Special Equipment Operator position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works to Transport Station Operator, to Jason Grimes of Woburn, and I requested the Board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Jason Grimes to the Transport Station Operator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following conditional regular full-time appointment in the Recreation Department to Principal Clerk One, to Michelle Blum, Blumstock of Winchester, and I requested the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Michelle Blumstock to Principal Clerk One.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following conditional regular full-time appointment, permanent appointment in the Treasurer's Office to Treasure Collector of Ms. Anne Gill of Groveland, and I respectfully request the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Anne Gill to the Treasure Collector position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks, Anthea, for that. You know, just following up on what Beth said, just want to congratulate Al and Sheila on a fantastic career in Winchester, spanning many decades for Al. And, you know, they'll be missed, but they've certainly earned their retirement, and we wish them all the best as they go forward, and hopefully we'll see them around as well. Not only was Al the Building Inspector, well, Building Commissioner, but he was also the Veterans Administrator as well. So that's, you know, dual roles. It was great, you know, to have him here and doing that. So thank you to Al, and thank you to Sheila, and best of luck. At this point, we would open the meeting up for public comment. We have a couple of public hearings this evening, one for Cross and Holden Street, one for Eversource grant location at 345, 343 Parker School, and then Thompson and Waterfield Road. So if you're here to comment on those three items, I'd ask you just to wait a moment, and we'll go through regular public comment at this time, and then we'll take those hearings individually. So if anyone's here for an item that I did not just mention, please feel free to raise your hand. I'll recognize you for three minutes. You can call on up and give public comments. So is anyone here for public comment? Stephanie, I think you had your hand up first.
Sit down.
Yep, absolutely. Have a seat.
Hi.
Hi. Stephanie Zaramba, 38 Park Ave in Winchester. I brought a very interested resident in this topic. I came to express on behalf of a few other residents' parents the desire to engage on parks and playgrounds and some improvements in Winchester. I know that's been on your agenda and is coming up again next meeting. You know, she is a student at Morocco. This became really acute for me. She fell off of one of the climbing structures, that's all. She was fine. But I wrote to the principal and I said, could we get some wood chips put below this thing because it was hard dirt? And she followed up, I think she, you know, whatever she did, but it never happened until after the audit that you all authorized showed that it was dangerous and it was closed. And I think that, that survey really showed the extent of need in the, in the playgrounds. So a few, like I said, a group of parents were starting to try to organize and just like build support for doing more. In the conversations we've had so far, thinking, our, our four thoughts are to be able to use ARPA or other grants or immediately available funds to do something about Leonard and fix some of those most severe issues that were identified. Definitely prioritizing the CPA adoption in Winchester for future funding of these things. Perhaps a stabilization fund so that there's dedicated financing for these things, so it's not being put against other capital needs since this is, these are our school playgrounds for a lot of them. And it, we're asking teachers often to police unsafe situations until they get fixed, which has not been happening super frequently. So that's a concern. And then lastly, partnering with the group of parents who are looking to volunteer, hopefully fundraise, and be able to partner with the town to bring hopefully some funding. So we just started a petition just to get people bought in and organized a couple days ago, already received over 200 signatures. And really here just to make to say, if there's any interest in continuing to chat with residents who are interested in this, share ideas, if there's any way we can help, whatever this Board decides to continue doing, we'd really love to be at the table or helping in any way.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Good night. All right, anyone else here for public comment? Come on up, sir.
Hey, folks. My name is Justin Kao. I live at 20 Glenwood Ave. So I'm here to comment on the 18 Glenwood Ave project that you guys have got going on. I know that you're putting out an RFP later today, right? I believe on the agenda.
There's, yeah, we have an item to discuss the 20 Glenwood RFP tonight, yeah.
Yeah, Beth knows me, I've been blowing her up on email.
Nice to meet you in person.
You know, I know that you guys haven't put the RFP out for public consumption yet, so I don't really have much to comment on that. Really, my goal here is to meet folks, so you guys put a face to a name. You know, we've been talking with the residents of Glenwood, so I'm going to be kind of acting as their voice as you guys are working through this project. I know these things can take a while, as Beth explained to me and my very impatient self. So I guess my ask is while your, while we vet out what the process is, what the proposal is actually going to be, that the Select Board pays attention to kind of the state of the property itself, since you guys are essentially the owners of the property. You know, we've had a lot of, since we moved in last year, it's been overgrown, the building itself dilapidated, falling apart. I don't know if you guys have seen the property since. You know, very helpful, recently we had a DPW come in and take care of some of the trees. It's still a mess and still needs a lot of work. So I ask that as this process goes on, and it can take a while, I realize that the Select Board continues helping maintain it and just keep our neighborhood safe and clean.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Well, good night. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to our next agenda item. We have a transfer of an ownership license for Camella's in town. It's my understanding that everything is in order for the transfer from staff. Everyone's been satisfied, is that right, Beth?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just a, a transfer of the, of the common vic license. Any questions on this by anybody? Any discussion? If we're ready, we can have a motion on that.
Can I ask a question? Will the, as I know there were some issues with the trash earlier with Camella's and Cup 89, has there been any just conversation in that handoff of what's required or carrying over the?
It's, it's my understanding that the, is it either the manager or somebody that runs the business now is just taking over, buying a franchise. So I think they're well aware of it, but we can certainly have our staff reach out again, go to and reach out about that process. And our Police Chief will, continues to monitor the situation, so. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Move we approve the transfer of ownership for the common vic's license from PJ Camella to Claudia Oliver of Lily's Restaurant LLC, doing business as Camella's at 529 Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Michelle's back. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, I think we're ready for our public hearings. It's 7:47, so we're right on, almost on schedule. The first one tonight is the Cross-Holton Street improvements at the intersection of Cross Street and Holden Street. So we have with us Tool. I see Erica here tonight. She's going to give a presentation. After that presentation, I'll open it up to anyone with public comment or questions. So come on up, Erica.
If it's all set, just hit.
Thank you so much, your life's.
How you doing?
Good, how are you all? Thank you for having me this evening. I saw it up there, but we're just.
Yeah, just want to hit the spacebar. Oh, Winchester.
We're very secure.
It's better than password, right?
That was just set on live TV. In recording.
Maybe we're going to change it.
It won't go large for this, let it roll away, I've tried.
Yeah, okay. I, well, I think we're just going to roll with it. Hopefully everyone can see, we can zoom in as needed. Good evening, members of the Board. As many of you know, I'm Erica Guidaboni at Tool Design. Thanks for having me this evening. This should be mostly a reminder with a little bit of an update on the final design of Cross at Holden. This all stems back from the Cross Street Traffic Calming Study that was conducted, I believe, in 2019 as one of the locations that had a higher crash occurrence on, on the corridor. The location is kind of marked in a circle on the screen. It's sort of an interesting intersection. You say Cross at Holden, but it actually also includes Lowell Avenue to the south and kind of East Street coming in on the side of Holden Street on the west. So we came to the, the Board after the initial study with some ideas, a conceptual design for the intersection. As you can sort of see on the screen, there's some drawn kind of trees in this area that represented a curb extension, shortening the crosswalk across Holden Street, looking at potentially relocating this crosswalk across Cross Street. It's a lot of crosses. And also a new crosswalk that doesn't exist today across East Street. But as you'll see on the screen, I, you know, have an image of a truck out there, something that we, you know, initially saw, but also learned a little bit more about is the, the truck activity at that intersection is really critical and kind of a design consideration that needs to be vetted as part of this design. So we actually worked with DPW and the Engineering Department and put out a pilot with the Safety Officer, which was a really interesting idea and a really thoughtful way to kind of test out our curb extension before we ran into an issue with some of those trucks having to run over a brand-new curb extension or causing any issues for access for abutters. So we actually kind of laid out this pilot with these barriers you see on the screen, kind of tested it out, kept an eye on it for about a week, slowly moved those barriers back and realized that we really didn't have the space that, to shorten that crosswalk to the degree that we were hoping we could. So the engineering design as it's set today is a little bit lighter touch than what we, you know, initially hoped to be a little more dramatic, but you'll see there's a few different elements here that I'll just flag here today.
So can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Because I went through there, I get so confusing when you, not, not for pedestrians, for pedestrians you take your left, you don't handle like, from a traffic standpoint, coming down Holden Street, you know, go right, you go left, you know, there's no island there, what's?
Yeah.
So how are you going to get the drivers to, or, you know, intuitively make it flow smoothly? Because right now, it's sort of like danger for me to look up the screen, it's traffic coming, I gotta look under the bridge, you know, there's like a, ends in a swivel kind of thing.
I wasn't there in 2019.
Oh, that's okay.
What you thinking on this?
No, I appreciate the questions because, you know, sometimes they get too.
Can I interrupt for just one second? Your sign says that you're in closed executive session. We just turned that, so it was the lighting.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry about that. How are you on?
I can repeat too if there's any issues or questions about what I said so far.
Everybody come on in.
So we're discussing Cross at Holton, and I think you're, you're asking some great questions.
Before you start, let me back up for a second. So we've just started our licensing hearings, and I see a lot of people coming in right now. So to start with, the first hearing, we're going to, public hearing we're having is on Cross and Holton Street and the improvements at the intersection of Cross and Holton Street. And that's what Erica is about to go through. The way this works is we'll hear from Erica from Tool Design, and then I'll open it up to public comment on the public hearing. I'd ask at that point you raise your hand, and I'd recognize you to come on up, state your name and address, and then you can give your public comment. And, you know, given the number of people here, I'd ask you to limit it to, you know, two minutes or so. And then if there's somebody, you know, that could be a spokesman for a number of you, that would be very helpful in, so that we're not just repeating the same thing, and then you can just agree with them or not. But if you have to add more to it, that's certainly appropriate as well. So Erica, you're going to, why don't you start over since everyone just came in?
Fairly brief, so.
We just started.
Just run through it real quick again. Good?
Yeah, and why don't you just introduce yourself, who you are?
Erica Guidaboni, that's how you say that. Tool Design. This is a hearing about Cross at Holton Street, which we are into final design on for this project. This stems from the 2019 Traffic Calming Study that we conducted for Cross Street, which showed this intersection as a priority location for safety enhancements. The location is up on the screen. It's a little small to see, but it's, when you talk about Cross and Holton, you're really also talking about Lowell Avenue from the south and East Street from the west. And we kind of ran a concept when we did that initial study that sort of had a curb extension, kind of to shorten the crosswalk as much as possible across Holton Street, providing a shorter crosswalk and additional crosswalk across East Street, and providing enhancements for the crosswalk across Cross Street. I guess I should also mention, since I get to do this again, we're looking at a rapid flashing beacon as well for that location. It's a really critical crosswalk to cross Cross Street there because it is a bit infeasible to put a cross, a sidewalk underneath the bridge at this time. It's going to be a very big challenge to try to continue that sidewalk on both sides. You can't see it on the page, but to the, to the east on the screen, the sidewalk ends on Cross Street on the south side. So everyone that's walking along the street needs to kind of use that crosswalk, so it's a really pivotal crosswalk. But as you can see from the truck there, you know, we really had to take a close look at, at how we designed this thing to ensure that we're not reducing access for some of the, some of the butters and uses along Holton Street and East Street.
So Erica, in that picture, where's the truck trying to?
That truck is coming from East Street and going north on Holton Street. And there is a, no truck sign that you can kind of see on the screen there, but that's for certain hours of the day. So it is, you know, an allowable move during some hours of the day, so we have to accommodate it. So we ran a pilot with DPW and engineering and the safety officer to kind of get a sense of what would be possible out here with that curb extension over the course of a week, kind of, you know, monitoring and taking photos, following up with DPW to see what they had noticed, had anything been knocked down, pushed over, things like that. Generally, what we found is that we were pushing it to a point where that curb extension really isn't worth your, your money. It would be a few feet, and it's not really worth, you know, building out that whole intersection. The safety benefit's not really there, unfortunately. So the way the design is now, and we're moving into final design, is a new crosswalk across East Street, which is, you know, really important for that kind of north-south connection for pedestrians. Something that I think might help answer your question a little bit related to how you approach the intersection as a vehicle, especially coming south on Holton Street. We're actually going to be doing an always-stop control there. So you're going to stop once and then stop again.
Erica, is it possible for you to point it out on the map?
Oh, sure, definitely, yeah. So this is, would be a stop bar here. So if you're coming down Holton Street, you would stop, look for vehicles in both directions here, and then continue down. So we're also including a do-not-block-the-box here in that direction, which, you know, isn't an end-all-be-all solution, but we think it's better than today. This is a free move. You're kind of shifting left and right through the intersection, and it's causing some issues on, to getting out of East Street. So we think this is going to provide some clarity there. A rapid flashing beacon is part of this. At Cross Street, we actually looked at possibly shifting it around. There's some challenging driveway locations, sightline issues with the, with the kind of compound curve of the crest that you mentioned, and also the, the kind of curvature in this direction of Cross Street. So we're actually going to leave it where it is. We think it's in a pretty good spot, but enhancing it with that rapid flashing beacon, we think, is really going to be a huge safety benefit. And then we're just marking a curb extension, which you can sort of see here. It's kind of what you have in town already that kind of painted to encourage most, most drivers to kind of just get in the lane that they're supposed to be in. And a painted kind of island here. So it's mostly, you know, mostly paint and signs and the rapid flashing beacon that we, and the control changes to this location that we think will have a big safety benefit here. And the cost estimate is $177,000, but that includes construction administration, police detail, and design contingencies as well. That's all I have for that one.
Does that include the rapid flashing?
That includes the flashing beacon as well, yes.
And what are we actually building out? We're not building out any?
It's really just, it's really just ramps. So the, you know, creating these two ramps that don't exist today and upgrading the sidewalk panels and the ramps at the crosswalk here.
And new painting?
Paint and signs and rapid flashing beacon, yeah.
Questions for Erica from the board members at this point?
Yeah, just a quick question. Where you have the oval in between the arrows? I don't know how to explain this. On, at the intersection of Holton and Cross. There used to be, maybe it's like, there, there used to be a raised island? Kind of with a, it may be just with a, a stop sign. I don't think it was actually like a pedestrian. Is that going to be removed and then that's going to be marked with paint?
So that.
But that isn't there right now.
That it doesn't exist now. And speaking with, with engineering and DPW, we talked about the kind of benefits of it. I don't particularly see a benefit to it. And this allows for, you know, there is, those trucks are pretty challenging. So getting around that island, I think people didn't even know which side they were supposed to be on it on. So I think.
I think the sign that was in that island got knocked down like once a week.
And it wasn't, it wasn't a complaint. It wasn't going to be sufficient for like a pedestrian refuge. You don't kind of don't want to make people think that it is safe for that when it really wasn't. So we decided to just leave it the way that it is here.
Will there be a new stop sign? Like you stop, if you're coming south down Holton Street, you stop once.
Right here, yes.
Yep, there'll be a stop sign there.
Stop sign here.
And then?
Stop sign here.
Okay.
And stop sign here.
Okay.
The, the East Street one and the Southern Holton one exist today, and the Northern Holton one is new.
Other questions?
I'll just, sorry.
Is this safer to move the crosswalk up Holton Street at the top of that triangle? Because I walk through there frequently. Yeah, up and down there, right. You, yes, all right, so someone has to work it at 50 yards across the street, but does that present another, another issue?
Yeah, I mean, I generally, so as I sort of mentioned earlier, if you're, if you're kind of walking along Cross Street, you have to essentially use that crosswalk, those two crosswalks because the sidewalk ends on the south side. So if you're coming on the south side, so like basically every pedestrian on Cross Street is using this. And I don't, I'm generally not going to discourage somebody from using the desire line if I can make it as safe as possible. I wouldn't really, I would see people not being compliant here if they had to walk all the way up here and come back down. They would just probably go across anyway.
Great.
Sorry? I'm sorry, what?
We're not moving, we're not moving. Yeah.
He was saying that the crosswalk was, you just can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
At East Street.
Yeah, I'll try to verbalize more.
Cross Holton at East Street.
Instead of where the crosswalk is here along the edge of Cross Street, he asked the question of could we put it to above East Street and encourage pedestrians to walk across East Street, across the shorter part of Holton Street, and then come back down? Little, it's a bit circuitous, so I would prefer to leave the crosswalk where it is for, and kind of meet the desire line of where the pedestrians will be.
So I'll just add that we did try very hard to tighten this radius, and what we kept butting up against is that there are very large trucks that go through here, and by making it safer for pedestrians, we were pushing the truck traffic into the other lane. And that overall, I think, we felt created a worse condition than exists today. So it was a balancing act. I think this is, we've looked at this pretty hard over the past few months, and this is kind of the best we're able to do at this point.
And I think you actually had some old plans from years ago as well here, and they all kind of end up with the same answer. There's not a lot of things you can creatively do here, unfortunately. So I do think this will be safer for pedestrians and having some more stop control and those markings, I think, will go a long way for vehicular traffic as well.
So the, before you were going to scroll this way, you have a cross-street bridge, which is low, and occasionally you're coming down. I say occasionally right now. Anytime you're coming down Cross Street, you're getting traffic. But occasionally you're coming down Cross Street, and it is incredibly backed up because a truck has gone that way.
Wrong way.
Oh.
And then they have to, and then everyone has to clear out, and they have to back all the way up the street to, to take that turn. I'm just wondering, in terms of, as, as we're looking at this, if there's any areas where signage is being added, that signage can, that an additional sign could go up that, you know?
It's a good question.
Has the bridge height.
That's a great question. Yeah, I don't think we did that.
Across the street.
Definitely.
By Lowell, to say, no trucks, no left turn.
I'll look for something, but that's a great idea, yeah.
Other comments or questions from board members at this point? Okay. So at this time, I would open it up to public questions and comments. I'd ask that you raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come on up to a seat, introduce yourself, state where you live, and certainly recognize you for a few moments. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment or ask a question? Come on up.
Question?
Yep, come on up, have a seat.
Just a question. My name's Susan Busher. I live at 35 Baldwin Street, which is off of Holton. And my question is about, well, actually, I guess I have two. When you're coming up Cross Street, heading west, taking a right-hand turn onto Holton to then head left up East, East Street. Right now, that's a big problem for everybody. Traffic coming all different ways because it's treated like a through street. Is there any new signage or anything going on that will be facing those cars as far as how they will yield or stop or what they'll do, you know, heading up and not to have a through street from Cross to East? That's one question. And my other one was, well, sort of informative about those trucks that use this intersection. It, it's really dangerous, as you probably have seen. They drive in order to make those turns, and you had a picture of one of them that was, actually looked like it was in trouble, but it was doing it right. They get into trouble, or they don't even care, and they drive on the sidewalks. So when, years ago, when the bus, school bus stop was there on the corner of Cross and Holton on the east side, there were people in this neighborhood that would not put their children on that corner in the mornings because the trucks were coming. Many a time, I've been stuck behind them and trying to back up on Holton in order to give them the room to make that turn. So, I mean, I, I don't, I know the couple of businesses up East Street they're coming from. Is there any way to put a size limit on that or protect us on those street corners with, I don't know what is in your toolkit, but, you know, like those big stanchions?
Yeah.
Or other things? You can't put, as you know, because of the island being broken down and the keep-right sign being crushed, and everybody on those corners, fences being crushed. There's, the, the, if you put anything that can't be easily replaced or that isn't a bounce back or something, it's going to be crushed. But I think the truckers don't even know half the time that they're on those sidewalks. So that's it. Like, what's going to happen with the heading into East Street traffic? And how we, you're going, how is the town going to protect us in the neighborhood and our kids from those trucks driving on those sidewalks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You raise a great question about the East Street thing. I guess I don't have a wonderful answer for how to address that issue. I guess, I guess I should have asked if the island helped at all? Did the, did you notice if people did that quick movement less?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I know it was my mistake. The center island on Holton Street that we said we're just going to have is paint. Did you notice when it had an island there, vertical island of the concrete? Did people do that kind of through movement to East Street a little less dramatically? Because that's the only idea. I would have to try to navigate what you just mentioned.
Well, yeah, I mean, perhaps because my idea over the many decades of watching this was that maybe that island had to extend a little farther up Holton. To be in a little bit of a, I mean, so East Street has two lanes coming and going. The people coming here only need that lane. So the island covered it a little bit, because I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a expert at all, but that's any answer to your question as to whether there needs to be more of a block there. I don't know. I do know that that painted island, which does give more room for the turn to go up Cross Street, that painted island is driven over in, by every car. It's just driven over. And that is a very, very long, you say the cement island should not have been used for refuge, pedestrian and bike refuge because it was.
Turnout.
Well, because, you said because it, it could be driven over and, and, you know, could be, you know, dangerous. Well, it was heck, heck, was heck a lot better than nothing. I used it plenty of times myself for refuge and crossing that crosswalk, and certainly when I had a bike or a baby carriage.
Yeah, so I mean, technically you need, I believe, six or eight feet width to allow for refuge. So I can't call it a refuge the way that it was before, but I appreciate your experience. So I, yeah, I guess in terms of elongating the island, you really couldn't do that because you have to allow the kind of westbound East Street to be able to come out and kind of do what that truck did. So if you pulled it further out, you'd be blocking out that access for the vehicles on, in that direction. So that's.
What if we, what if we use like an island, like we just put, not necessarily cobblestones, but a look of cobblestone, like extend it out just to give it the look of?
Like longer than?
Yeah, longer than what you have, just to help with that turning radius, so that trucks can go over it.
I mean, I, I would be the first time I've ever seen something like that in terms of it being a legal move that everyone can do, that you, like, would be kind of discouraging.
Yeah. Do you see a lot of intersections like this though?
Creative thinking. I'm certainly willing to go back to the drawing board and think a little bit more about some creative ideas for that specific maneuver that this woman talked about.
Yeah.
Because she's, I mean, you're right. It, you know, when you, if you're coming down south down Holton Street, the traffic turning on to Holton Street to go down East Street, they don't necessarily stop.
Yeah, well, they didn't have to before. So that, I do think we are making that improvement. But the specific movement that was just discussed, we're not stopping that from happening.
We're actually making that the dominant movement because now we're putting the stop sign across Holton Street.
Right.
Well, well, that movement can also take a right, so it's kind of like, but that movement.
But they, they have more freedom.
They have the right of way, and the reason for that being, I couldn't put a stop sign there. You have, be able to have one car stop before they spill into, into Cross Street, so.
I get it, but where we're stopping back, you know, up Holton Street now, it's tough to see around that corner, I would imagine.
Can you put a beacon on the, that little crosswalk?
The East Street crosswalk? We could look at it. Usually when, usually when there's a stop control, I don't recommend them, but there is a free move over it. But that's pretty standard, you know, most, most, if you looked at this and pretended it was a normal three-way intersection, if there was stop control on the, on the minor leg, I wouldn't know, you know, and the, and the turn can go over it. I normally don't recommend a cross, a rapid flashing beacon over that minor leg.
But I think in terms of just how this was described and knowing that turn, that if there is like a visual and lightly textured, I don't really know, something that can give an illusion to a driver that they shouldn't just go wild and go.
Straight across, yeah.
But that wouldn't, you know, interfere with things.
Yeah, I mean, certainly most of the time of the day, or at least some of the. Yeah, I mean, certainly, most of the time of the day, or at least some of the day, there will be vehicles stopped at Cross Street. So they won't be able to kind of got across because there'll be vehicles there. But something texturally, I could see in that kind of island area that could probably go a long way. Even if it's like a center rumble strip or something like that. Or I know they're not beautiful, but, you know, flex posts could be something that could be a measure as well that could kind of discourage. Hardened center lines are another kind of interesting thing where it's essentially flex posts, but kind of bolted into the ground in a line that people can't drive through. So that's another, so we could think about some tactical ways to kind of beef up that center to address the comment.
Sometimes even just the noise of your tire going over something like a cobblestone will slow some people down. I mean, with, you know, understanding that most people are just going to get used to driving over it. But, you know, so it's a, you know, it's a worthwhile benefit, but that's all you can do, I think.
Other comments or questions from the public? Come on up, sir. Hi.
How's it going?
Good.
Michael Hall for Holden Street. And I know it's probably not going to be a popular recommendation, but what about making East Street and Adams Road one ways? So that you can come out of this intersection, but you couldn't come back into it. I know Adams Road probably wouldn't want the truck traffic, but it also prevents that left-hand turn for the trucks that have to make the swing off of Cross Street instead.
Use a map with some more context for myself here. Oh, this is Adams. Yeah, so we talked about that just internally at my office. It had that same concern that we're sort of, you know, pitting streets against each other kind of thing when we do that. But that was something that came up because it would have some control benefits. Given the truck traffic, I think especially, I, we'd have to have some engagement, I think, with the Adams Road residents if we were going to do something like that.
And the trucks turning out of Adams Road, I'm not sure. But they have, they had less space than taking a.
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah, run the analysis to see if that intersection could even handle.
And Erica, we have truck traffic going through this intersection at all times of day. It's not like there's a period of time where you could make something one-way or anything like that that would beneficial. I didn't, I'm just asking, I don't, if that's what our.
Oh, yeah, we actually tried to get that information from DPW, like knocked on some doors on the, the businesses there. And we kind of struggled with that, honestly. I mean, there's certain hours of the day that I think truck traffic is more, but it's not, not all night long. Certainly both peak hours that I've kind of looked at, there's certainly been regular truck activity.
Other comments or questions? Come on up.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jenna, I live on the Cross Street, right at that triangle. So I think adding the stop signs overall improved the safety. I've seen lots of parents, including myself, I send my kids to the ballet center, Russian math, or on that side. And then people use, sometimes kids alone, walking, using those crossways there to walk to those after-school programs. So I think, or I think it's beneficial to the community. Another improvement I would suggest, but maybe out of scope of today's topic, is to add another sidewalk under the bridge. So kids or parents or people who walk could use both sides. They don't have to go across and then walk and then cross again. So that seems to not very safe to me, not a very good strategy.
Thank you. We actually did look at that as part of the initial traffic calming study. It was a little follow-up that we did because we felt that was so important, everyone in the room did. We looked at a couple of different ideas, but the road underneath the bridge is too narrow. And so they're going to have to work with the MBTA to get that bridge changed is probably making the project infeasible in itself. If we were to do it, just kind of, if the town were to make an initiative on their own, you would have to have that be one-way vehicular traffic under the bridge. So you could either do that by making Cross Street one-way or putting up a signal that sort of gives the vehicular traffic each a turn and you go back and forth. So that's unfortunately kind of where you are in terms of that with. I think down, in the future, when that bridge needs to be replaced, absolutely, that's what will happen. But it's going to be some time, I think, before that kind of goes forward.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Another way, maybe a little bit too crazy, is somehow build a bridge over the train. But it will be very convenient for people who live on this side. And then they can walk to the community park or.
I wonder if there's any, is there, I guess there's no really crossing locations of the railway, unfortunately. But if there was anywhere that's maybe not right directly on the street, like some right-of-way or park that you could kind of build a path through, that might be something to think about in the future.
Maybe EverSource could leave us their tunnel, or we could just tunnel underneath the river. We'll hear from them in a little bit, maybe we could ask that question. Any other comments or questions about, come on up, sir?
Fred Savage, nine Adams Road, talking about Adams Road. Where are the stop signs going to be added? I can't see much from that angle.
All right, yeah, let's just, I can zoom in as close as I can to the intersection on a.
Yeah, whole street entering is really a complex thing.
Yeah, so I'm zooming in a little bit here, but there's already a stop sign on East Street, there's already one.
There's one on East Street?
Yes, yep. There's one on Holden. And so we, if it's, if it's not installed, then it should be under stop control. And if it's not, then it will be there.
No, there's not, I walk by there every day.
I totally believe you, I apologize. We're putting in a stop sign there.
It has to emphasize double lanes.
You need one, definitely, but I don't think it's there.
I forgive me, so we got a stop sign on East Street and then with a stop bar as well, like the kind of line there. There'll be one here as well. And then one down at Cross Street.
Okay, so you have the double, East Street and Cross.
Yeah, you're going to have to stop, you're going to stop twice if you're coming from the south or the north.
And it'll all have the.
So that's a, that's a private way, I don't think we want to put any signage there. I think they understand they're supposed to stop, but it's a private way, so we really don't have jurisdiction over it.
Well, it's going to be the flashing lights similar to what's down at, for his files for crossing, similar with the.
At the bike way, where the sock club is and the bike path, yep, it'll be a similar.
And where's that going to be?
And that's going to be for this crosswalk here. Yeah.
What about the long crosswalk?
So we generally, I generally recommend them where a crosswalk is uncontrolled. So right now, Cross Street is free in both directions. So I want to put a rapid flashing beacon on the uncontrolled crossing. No, it'll be on the edges. We're going to rebuild just kind of a piece of the sidewalk and put a post on either side with the lights when you press the button. Solar panels.
That's all solar and it's all contained.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Jayle Bemirsky, nine William Circle. My question is, what about considering either a traffic signal or turning Cross Street into a four-way stop too?
Thank you, we actually looked at all of that when we did the initial traffic calming study and four years ago now. We looked at a few different options, we actually looked at a roundabout here too, a traffic signal, all-way stop control, two-way stop control with a rapid flash beacon. Between cost and construction and impact to right-of-way, you know, the signal on the roundabout really didn't work. And all-way stop control, you've created an exorbitant amount of queues on Cross Street. It really backed up vehicles quite a bit in both directions. Because the, the nature of an all-way stop is that everyone gets an equal amount of time. Every approach gets an equal amount of time in the kind of phasing of the, of the all-way stop. And Cross Street just has dramatically more traffic than the side streets. So we decided that the stop control as it is today was appropriate.
So I'm sorry, did you say cost played a role in the traffic signals?
Yeah, yeah, cost is certainly part of it. It's also a really challenging geometry to build, like who do you stop, where do you stop? It'd be a really inefficient signal.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Come on up, sir.
So hi, Chris Hurd, nine Holden Street. And just kind of to level set, I think the broader message that we should be taking away is, as it's currently constructed and given current uses, it's very difficult to fix anything, right? And that's sort of where we are with everything. I just, we're not going to be back here like five years from now and then there's all of a sudden going to be a breakthrough without some sort of massive usage change to what we're doing, right? Okay, just wanted to.
Yep, that's, yeah, good summary.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want, you know the chart, it show, is there a block, you say block, a lock, where the cars wouldn't go like in front of East Street, like they'd stop at Holden? And then have to, you know how the painting on the street is Xed out?
Yeah, do not lock the box, we call it.
Okay, oh, I do not understand.
I'm sorry, I'm using too many, I'm using too much jargon, I'm sorry. Yeah, the kind of crosses across the, you know, painted on the intersection field.
Okay, can you put that back so we can see it? That's my only question there, thank you.
Sorry about that, thanks for asking questions.
Okay, so that's it.
And we only put it on the kind of receiving side because this should be free flow. So that's the intention there. It's a little funny looking, but I think it's more understandable when you're actually using it.
Come on, Ben.
Ben Keeler, one Walcott Road. Just on that visibility specifically, when we did the initial studies, you mentioned them four years ago, there was discussion of the, for the rapid flashing beacon crossing Cross. For the rapid flashing beacon crossing Cross Street. We talked about that maybe not being enough with cars coming westbound on Cross Street up the berm. And I think there was originally a discussion of the design including a Hawkeye, it's like a Hawkeye light. So you could actually see it coming, you know, better coming up Cross Street instead of coming right up to the, getting into the intersection and then seeing the light. So improving the visibility coming up Cross Street. Is there any other design aside from two rapid flashing beacons that we could use here just to help improve the visibility coming west on Cross Street?
I don't, so I mean, I feel pretty good about the rapid flashing beacon. Actually, the way the kind of lights work, it kind of grain into your head and you really can see them. And, you know, given that they're up above the ground and well lit, I feel pretty confident that that's going to be a major improvement for this crossing. We typically don't recommend kind of the Hawk, it's also kind of pedestrian hybrid beacon for a two-way, or sorry, excuse me, two-lane street. They're pretty, they're pretty big, you really use those for like overbuilt four-lane roads type of thing. They are a full traffic signal essentially. So this is, I think, appropriate, looking at the, it's the FHWA guide for uncontrolled crossings. It's a matrix thing and the rapid flashing beacon kind of comes up as the best thing. I understand there's always nuance with the, with the sightlines. But we did run a sight triangle analysis, not only for every stop sign for vehicular movement, but also traveling in both directions on Cross Street.
Thank you, yeah, I think it was, you know, it was part of an option that was presented by Tool. So that's why I was, I was just bringing it back up, just to make sure that you had talked about it, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to close this portion of the hearing for public comment and open it up to discussion by board members. Are you looking for us to take action?
So we don't have to come back to the board and we can kind of move forward with finalizing the design and putting this out for construction. Probably over the next year, this is probably us, maybe, it depends kind of on the EverSource schedule because obviously we want the road to be paved before we go out there and do any pavement markings. But, you know, approval by the board for the concept as presented with maybe some modifications to that island, I think is kind of what we heard in terms of the feedback. And certainly approving the stop sign that's proposed at Holden at East.
All right, so Michelle, I didn't know, I saw you pop on there. On mute yourself, do you have any questions or discussion or anything?
I do not.
All right, just wanted to check with you first. Anyone here?
My only question, Rich, was, you know, some of the changes here aren't, you know, huge constructions. Is any part of this our DPW can do, if even it's painting lines or some of the ramps? I mean, it seems, you know, expensive, you know, for, for what we're doing.
Well, I think there's some funding from the, the 40B on River Street that I think is covering this project.
Right, right, yep.
Understanding.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not really looking for any additional.
This will not be a capital project. We got $275,000 from the River Street project and then we have additional money from the EverSource MOU. So between those two sources, we'll be able to cover everything.
Oh, okay, I thought that some of that money was being used closer to River Street, but, but no.
Right, so there, the 40B is building a new sidewalk on River Street. And this was, there was a long process with the ZBA during the permitting process where they kind of review, you actually developed this concept or further developed the concept as part of the kind of 40B project. And this was sort of there, I think we call it fair share payment towards the mitigation.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? I mean, it looks good based on the feedback we've gotten. I mean, it's tricky intersection, is my opinion. I think just as we talked about, if we can, a rumble strip or something in the middle, but I'm not.
And the truck, additional truck signage as well, I think is a great comment that we can look to address as well.
All right, so not hearing anything else from any board members, we can take a vote?
Move that we approve the improvements at the Cross and Holden Street intersection as presented tonight with the modifications discussed.
Second.
I'm going to do a roll call vote because Michelle's not here. So John?
Yes.
And Thea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, yeah, miss. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
See you in a little bit.
Thanks, Erica.
All right, so that concludes that hearing. We're going to move on in our agenda. Our next hearing is for the EverSource grant location for the Parker School, three forty-five, three, what's the street?
Go ahead, how are you?
So I just wanted to invite our new town engineer, Matt Schuman, up to the table because passing the torch officially, granting locations to Matt. Matt started on June 12th and very happy to have him here. Matt used to work in Winchester as the assistant town engineer and then was in the city of Watertown for nine years. So very happy to have him back.
Welcome back, Matt, thanks for joining us tonight on your maiden voyage. Be sure to ask very tough questions for you. Go ahead.
EverSource would like to install approximately seven feet of conduit from existing pole three forty-five over three to the Parker School.
Is this to support the new, well, the temporary.
Yes.
Modular classrooms.
School that we have, modular classrooms?
And we'd like to get as many as possible.
We would too. Anything from you, Matt, on this?
I'll handle this one, this is, yes, this is my last, from here on out. Yeah, no, so we reviewed it, there's no concerns from engineering or DPW.
Any questions for board members? Hearing none. Anyone from the public here for this EverSource grant location at the Parker School? I recognize you. Seeing no one, we will move on. Any further discussion for board members or are we set to take a vote? All right, we'll have a motion.
Move we approve the EverSource grant of location for existing pole three forty-five, three to the Parker School on Andrews Road.
Second.
Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
And Thea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a nice night.
Thanks, Jackie.
All right, next is a hearing on Thompson and Waterfield Street to change the one parking space at the corner of Thompson and Waterfield Street to a fifteen-minute takeout only spot. So Beth, I don't know if you want to start this or.
Sure. So we have a request from the property owner, business owner at the corner of Waterfield Road and Thompson Street. The space that's at the corner on Waterfield Road, you all voted to make that fifteen-minute parking. The request is to change the signage from fifteen-minute parking to fifteen-minute takeout curbside pickup signage, which is similar to a few other signs that's in a few other locations around town.
So we have two currently, it looks like, in town. One outside Alini's Grill, that's fifteen-minute takeout curbside pickup. And then we've got one on Converse Place that is sixty-minute parking, I'm sorry, thirty-minute parking. That's eight AM to six PM. And that's, also got a sign that says fifteen-minute parking, takeout, curbside pickup only.
That's my understanding as well.
Well, it doesn't say only for pickup, okay? And these were put. Uh, and these were put in 2021, but?
Correct.
Previous town manager.
It was part of the conversation that spring, uh, about outdoor dining.
Okay. All right, anyone here from the public who wish to make a comment on this? Can raise your hand or recognize them? Anybody? Jim, you want to talk?
Hi, doing, um, the LBI 58 Oxford Street. Town meeting member precinct seven and current president of the Chamber of Commerce. So I think what actually happened is, um, with, with COVID and everything like that, I think those takeout-only parking signs are a detriment. It's, we've lost parking spaces to the town for, um, the restaurants, restaurants are using those spaces, which I think is great. I think, I think that is, the outside dining has, is a very positive thing. But I think to designate parking spaces for takeout only is a problem. I feel as if, um, 15-minute parking spaces are great, especially in this area. I think with the post office there, stuff like that, 15-minute parking spaces, quick CBS. I think that, um, the previous town manager was trying to acquiesce to people as far as trying to get, I mean, that was supposedly for Alani's, Bruegger's, Joe, Joe Pizza, Joe's Pizza, I'm sorry. That was, I, I, I feel as if those should be 15-minute parking spaces. I think the town needs 15-minute parking spaces for quick in and out, okay? Which helps with takeout. I mean, someone comes in, you need to police that, okay? After the, after the time of six o'clock, we don't have, we don't have the policing. I mean, there's, there's been a sign there, which is great. I mean, that, that works, that works at night and whatnot, but, you know, I, I, we have not had a, um, board vote. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the chamber, I'm speaking on behalf of chamber members, okay? I've gotten calls from multiple chamber members saying, you know, why can't I? I'm not a restaurant, restaurants have already had parking spaces, why can I not have a 15-minute parking space? Whether it be for a, a clothing boutique, whether it be a jeweler, whether it be, you, you're, we're stepping down a path of what makes, I understand restaurants are great and they are bringing people into town. No denial of that, I think it's a great thing. I think the vibrancy of Winchester Center is spectacular right now. I grew up in town, six o'clock at night, there were no lights, it was dark, no one was in Winchester Center. I think that the restaurants are bringing people to town. I appreciate that as a current business owner in Winchester and as a, as a chamber president and as just a resident of Winchester. I think that it's a great thing. I think that we all need to work together, whether it's with the chamber and the lights and the flower. We need to make the town work together, okay? And if we just keep giving these requests to restaurant owners, and I, I, Jim, I, I love you, I love all the restaurant owners in town. I think Phil's a great guy, why shouldn't Phil be able to have one right in front of his place? Why should not, why should, um, Dagostino's not be able to have one in front of their, everyone? We're just going down a slippery path. And I think that from members of the Chamber of Commerce, business owners in town, they want to know why are they not supported in their parking efforts? There are, you know, as I, I'm not trying to repeat myself, but, you know, Lucia's has three or four spaces out in front. Black Horse has three or four spaces out in front. Atevola has three or four spaces out in front, like, you know, there should, there should be, you know, we need to be, be protecting some of the smaller businesses and that's, that's the, that's the feedback I'm getting. And, um, as I said, pro-restaurant, pro-everything like that, we just need to be careful of these presence. I think actually what we should do is remove the signs that are there in front of Alani's and they're there on, um, Converse Place and they should be 15-minute parking. And that, that helps the takeout, that is a takeout, that's not someone parking there for 45 minutes for an hour and a half. Those signs are setting a precedent for restaurants in town or other businesses in town that they should, they should have ne- COVID happened and it's, COVID in my mind is, we're past that. We should not be doing takeout, it should be 15-minute parking. And if someone needs to shoot into CBS or shoot into, you know, um, the new shop, that should not be a takeout-only parking space. That's, that's just how it feels, so take that for what it is, thank you.
Thanks. Heidi?
Hello, Heidi Ruttstein, 22 Grove Place. So I'm a business owner, um, and piggyback on what, um, Ben said. I've heard from a lot of chamber members as well, I'm also a chamber member. Retail is having a very difficult time feeling that it's not being supported. And like Ben said, I agree that having the restaurants with outdoor seating is really nice. It is great to see the beautification that's happened downtown because of it. It's great that restaurants have been able to at some times double their capacity, which they normally wouldn't have because COVID has happened and then this has transpired because of it. But how many more parking spaces are we going to keep taking away to be designated just for restaurants? It's not fair. Um, there's been no assistance to retail businesses in any way, shape or form from the town since the start of COVID all through now. I'd love a 15-minute parking space in front of my store so that people that want to run in and buy a gift card can run in and buy a gift card and leave. Why can't I get that? If we start giving every business that wants it 15-minute parking for their specific need, it's just not fair. It would be a different story if some of the restaurants in town were working with other small businesses and retail to try to make us all, uh, survive in this environment. But I don't see that happening. Um, it hasn't happened during COVID. There's been, uh, very little support from restaurants with retail, no partnerships. You know, I've approached businesses and asking if we can do some type of partnership and it's just not happening. So while I love the outdoor dining, it's already taking up parking spaces and now we want to take up more. And especially in that location, there is 15-minute parking and if you're only going to do it after hours, well, the post office is closed and it's right there. Stop the car, go. The other thing that happens with that particular space is people stop in the crosswalk. And so when you're trying to cross that street, which is dangerous enough already and people are pulling in behind because they want to get to that 15-minute space while somebody's pulling out, they block the crosswalk. And we have to wait or go around, it's a dangerous intersection, people fly down Waterfield. So I really caution you to think carefully about continuing to approve specific, uh, spaces and requests that pertain only to one business and not all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree with Heidi on the, uh, they do speed down Thompson Street, we need to speed buck down that. Anyway, um, by the way, DiAgostino's does use the spot, there's plenty of people that sit in our spot and run up to DiAgostino's. I'm not saying that we're different, but we are because we have people that are, uh, coming to our restaurant between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM, um, to take up a lunch. You know, pretty good, uh, to-go business. A lot of these other businesses don't have a to-go business like that where their, the item is there waiting for them and for people to come and park into that spot. Same thing between five, 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM, uh, very busy with the takeout, especially on weekends. And then we all, restaurants do serve a good purpose in this town, do, in town as well. It's, we, we have a, a meals tax, something called a meals tax at the town. Uh, you know, they, they picked it up in 2013. Since 2013, our business alone, and I'm sure the other businesses are right in line, have made a quarter of a million dollars for the town coffers in meals tax. I mean, it's not like we're not putting out, we're also paying for those spots. What I think is a pretty hefty price, at a thousand dollars a spot. So it's not like we're doing anything and we want special, uh, attention. I also have that teeth thing going on down there and that's a nightmare. As far as parking, as far as, uh, cleaning filters every week, uh, all sorts of, you know, things going on over there. So I, I am looking for that spot to have that sign and I think, uh, it would be, you know, a, a safety issue is, is, you're right, they are parking in the crosswalks. Uh, and it's people coming in to grab their food and, I mean, I can't control that, but crosswalks being blocked. And I'm not even talking about the sign, uh, all day, all day, excuse me, all day long. I'm talking about if we can just even put the hours up, uh, you know, no parking during lunch hour or during the dinner hour or something like that. And like I said, I, I, mine, that came, that came down over a year ago. And, uh, I did, I see the other people that you mentioned that have, still have the signs on. And people, the 15-minute sign, they don't, nobody really, um, getting back to what you said, they, they don't pay attention to the 15-minute sign. They take, they pay more attention to the takeout sign during these hours, you know, or, uh, but they're not paying attention to the, uh, 15-minute sign, it's, it's, it's a bust, it really is. And by the way, that 15-minute sign used to be there forever. Uh, you grew up in the town, you've seen it, uh, over 40 years, that 15-minute sign. And, and it was good for the post office and people running in and out. But, uh, and then when we went to the hour parking, um, they, they took the 15-minute, made it an hour and then you turned it back to 15 minutes, the last meeting we had about a year ago. So, uh, you know, there's, I understand what they're saying, um, but, you know, it's, they don't have the takeout business. You know, we have a takeout food business and, and I think if, honestly, if you put it to the vote for all the people that come to the tavern, they'd be here and, you know, in droves saying, yeah, we, you know, they come in, they come in, they come in ticked off at me, I go, what, what am I going to do? You know, they come in and they say, you know, I'm, I parked in the crosswalk or I had to park way down there, I had to do this. And because of the construction going on in there, you, you'd think that you maybe would give us a little bit of a, you know, an extra push on this one. And I don't know if you have to redesign the sign, but 15 minutes isn't working. It's not, you know, um. Any questions? Rich?
No questions for me. Who else? All right, thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Anyone else? Very quickly.
Thank you, um, I understand what Jim is saying, but he is not the only business that has been since like that. And that lack of parking is affecting all. So he might have people that come in that say they're frustrated, they can't find a spot to park in to go pick up. Well, it's not just them, it's people that are finding frustrating, uh, pa- parking just to come into my store. My, my store is not somebody, a place where somebody spends an hour. They're, they're, they spend like 15 to 20 minutes and they leave. So, um, and I don't think that, um, a restaurant in that way is any more uniquely positioned than a retail business who has lost money during COVID with no support. Thank you.
All right, anyone else for public comment on this? All right, seeing no one, I'll close public comment on this hearing, um, open it up to discussion amongst board members.
So Beth, I have a question for you and maybe Erica's here if she can maybe answer. The mini parking studies we've had downtown, um, what have they shown relative to Ben's point about having multiple areas with 15-minute parking or half-hour parking? Or Jim said no, you can pay attention to it. So is it all for naught and you just go with an hour because that's easier to police or what's the thinking behind that?
So the scheme that we have now, right, that has one hour in the town center plus some scattered fif- leaving aside the kind of takeout spaces, the scattered around, uh, 15-minute was culmination of like a five-year process, right, to get to that. Originally, we had two-hour parking and then the recommendation actually from the chamber was to move it to the one hour. More recently, Tool kind of did, we call them a mini parking study downtown. I think their recommendation was to move most of it to a 30-minute space in the town center as opposed to the one hour, which, you know, is probably something we have to come back, circle back and have kind of a wider discussion. It was more focused on the interim period while the MBTA construction was going on and then thinking long-term after the station is complete. You know, I think it, what I've heard and I, you know, I'm sure the chambers heard the same thing, it goes both ways, right? Some folks feel like an hour is not long enough because they want to go get lunch and go to CBS. Some folks feel like an hour's too long, they want to have more turnover. I think it goes both ways really, overall.
Further questions, discussion?
So how does this fit in? And we're going to have Erica back as our next agenda item, right? So, I, I mean, how does, if we look at the downtown action plan, um, that totally redesigns that Thompson-Waterfield intersection and I believe that's also, as I try to pull up the, I mean, I think we're talking about that.
Yeah, so I think we're looking at, um, putting in a raised crosswalk in that area and kind of reconfiguring things a little bit. That's a long, long-term plan. Um, we have, not to get too far ahead of us, we have, uh, we're very lucky to receive a half-million-dollar earmark from the state that will get us through the design phases, but we still have to figure out construction funding, which will not be insignificant. So I think this is kind of a shorter-term, whatever, whatever you decide here, it's a shorter-term solution and that's a much longer-term, uh, conversation.
Other questions or discussion?
So, uh, you know, I guess, you know, my thinking is the, the request on our agenda is for takeout only after 5:00 PM. So is that the request that we're discussing?
I think he wanted a takeout spot for, for every, just, he wanted a takeout spot, period, not after 5:00 PM.
Yeah.
One should do it.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't think we put a time on it, but?
Okay.
You know, like, you know, like 11:01 is just, you know, too much or, and then, you know, five to seven. It's just the, the, the time, the people, just the, that's the time, they're all coming in for the bags of food.
Yeah, so I think he wanted more of a spot like you saw in the picture in front of Alani's, which is this takeout curb-side pickup, 10, 15 minute.
Yeah, so.
Can I, I don't understand, no? What's wrong with 15-minute parking, like just having that being a 15-minute parking?
So.
That's what we have now. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I don't speak at all, I apologize.
So one of the hard things about the 15-minute parking from, um, and I won't speak for Jim, but from the perspective of other restaurant owners and, um, it, it's hard for us to enforce, right? Because, um, for somebody to go around the block, we've got, when we have someone, right, it's one person walking around the entire town center and trying to tag a car and trying to do that, right? So it, it's invariably, um, in fact, there's someone that is almost always there for an hour plus in that spot and that, the 15-minute spot that kind of pick up ends up being the crosswalk, right, in that location? So, um, and I know that that, you know, also is the problem. Um, there is the 15-minute takeout spot, um, right next to Lucia as well, to, to serve the, that restaurant there as well. So, um, and the one next to Alani's. Um, I am.
Restaurants.
And, and restaurants, sure, sure. And, and Karma is going to be there on the corner as well. And so I think this spot is going to serve multiple restaurants as well, which from my perspective are really the, the lifeblood of our town center. They keep people coming in, um, to our other shops and it's a, it's a balance, right, between creating foot traffic and trying to, um, attract as many people on a regular basis, um, down there. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to Jim, uh, in the sense that- So I'm sympathetic to Jim in the sense that the MBTA project there is an absolute nightmare. And where we have said over and over again, and I know Beth contacts the MBTA on a regular basis, hey, we, your cars can't be in spots, your trucks can't be in spots. You know, there's people on that project that have work to do. And so a lot of those spaces that would serve, you know, the restaurants and retailers in that area, you see them, and some people don't like to park underneath the the bridge there because it's pretty sketchy looking if you're, if you're taking your your kid out of a car and putting them in a stroller, right? There's stuff coming down, it's it's not, doesn't inspire confidence. So, you know, I would say, hey, if we're gonna, over the next couple of years, be really looking at the town center and through this this action plan, all of this is going to keep changing, and it has, right? Since the chamber really got involved and we really started changing things to one hour and hiring more parking enforcement. So the the impact from the train station for me says, hey, let's put this be, if if restaurants in that area need to be a takeout spot, fine. I think for the period of the the construction impact there, and we can, we can look on this, you know, when we renew the licenses on an annual basis. So I, that's, that's my opinion anyway, it's what I've seen just anecdotally. I I don't think, I think a lot of people use it for this this spot for the post office as well, even though those are there, if you're coming down Thompson Street, especially if schools are letting out, you don't want to take a right, you know, on Waterfield and then go around, you know, take a left to come around to get to those spots, right? Unless you're coming from that way, those spots don't work. So there's a lot of congestion there, it's it's a tough location, but I am pretty sympathetic for a takeout restriction there. Yeah, I see it in a lot of other communities, a takeout restriction for for that spot on a temporary basis. So that would be, that would be my thought.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just ask, what's the history of the fifteen-minute spots? I know this was a sort of COVID-going towards fifteen-minute restaurant parking spots. I think there was one on Main Street by Carmella's as well for a while, and that sign is gone, so I'm just curious, like, all of, sort of, adding and then the removing and removing in certain places, whether that was
What happened during COVID was, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but each of the restaurants, I got, I think it got, you know, three parking spots for outdoor dining, and then they got a fourth spot to have, if you saw them, you know, the sandwich boards, takeout-only parking. So then when the COVID subsided, and we started to look at outdoor dining on a more regular basis, we eliminated those takeout-only spots and said you have three parking spots. And, you know, if you wanted two to be for outdoor dining, then you could, but you could, you know, have another for takeout only. But then everyone wanted just the the extra tables. So I think the town manager at the time looked for a couple of locations for places that weren't getting outdoor dining, specifically China Sky, Alini's, Joe's Pizza, and I think Carmella's at the time, to strategically put what I thought were fifteen-minute parking spots. I didn't know these signs actually existed until you brought it to our attention. And, you know, that's how it ended up, one ended up in Alini's and one ended up on Converse Place. Is that, is that, is that the history?
Prior to that, when we went to the one-hour spaces downtown, we did designate some limited fifteen-minute spaces, like near a couple banks, near the post office, but it wasn't specific to usage area, it was a, just a general fifteen-minute parking space.
Right. You know, I I can appreciate Jim's position, I think I've been pretty consistent on this. I I don't think there should be any takeout curbside pickup spots in town. It's kind of pitting one business against the other, saying, my business is more important than your business. And I think, you know, if you talk to the retailers down there, you go to any meeting about retailers, and you could be talking about any subject, it always comes back to parking in the center. And it talks about those those coveted spots on Main Street, Thompson Street, Mount Vernon, you know, all those spaces. And, you know, I once floated the idea that Tool came up with about the half-hour parking and how we have these circles where we're looking for targeted shopping, and then went bigger. You know, if you wanted to come for an hour, it was, you know, you park, you knew to park outside this zone, two hours outside that zone, so you trained behavior. That went over with like a lead balloon. The next thing I knew, everyone was saying that I was going to change parking to thirty-minute everywhere. So, you know, it's a very hot-button issue, and I think retailers, you know, whether it's, you know, it's an emotional issue for a lot of these retailers, and they see, you know, I just met with, you know, I think ten businesses for the first time in person to talk about, you know, the holiday stroll, you know, already starting to plan for Christmas. And, you know, we were talking about bringing back Midnight Madness, and, you know, issues came up surrounding parking, this parking spot, you know, what they pay for licensing fees to put a clothing rack out, insurance, sip and shop events, you know. You know, they have some opinions. And one of the opinions is, you know, that, you know, fifteen-minute parking space is great, but it's great for all businesses, it shouldn't just be limited to a takeout business, is is what I gleaned from the the ten merchants that were there. Why they don't want to go to half-hour parking, you know, with the targeted shopping, I'm not sure. Maybe they'll make that leap if we explain it, but I think that's a direction the town needs to think about. But in terms of this parking space, I think it's used for many businesses and and many areas. So, I mean, I think, you know, it should not be takeout only. I think, Jimmy, you're only open for lunch, is it Wednesday through Sunday, or Thursday through Sunday?
Yeah, Wednesday through Sunday.
Wednesday through Sunday.
And if I may, just really quick, I'll tell you what's killing us still, is the farmers market. You know, I mean, I wish it was still over here across the street. I mean, that's killing everybody down there. Everybody, all of us, it's, the businesses down there.
Yeah, I mean, we have a balance, we, I mean, I think it's our job to balance, you know, there's a lot of people that want to use the center, even while it's under construction. So we try to balance certain aspects of it to to try to accommodate everyone. So everyone's feeling a little bit of the pain here, and maybe some are feeling more than pain. There's no question this construction's right outside your house, I mean, right outside your restaurant. So, I mean, if anything, you know, I mean, I know a lot of the retail businesses close at six, you know, maybe they close at five. You know, if we wanted to do, you know, fifteen-minute parking and then takeout curbside after five or six, you know, that's something. But I also think, you know, to someone else's point, you know, this is kind of a slippery slope, you know. We've allowed it now, and I didn't know, you know, that parking spot on Converse Place was, had that sign. But we've allowed it in these certain areas. Who's to say that these other restaurants aren't going to come back and say, well, I want that too? I mean, you know, First Us Pub does lunch and dinner takeout all the time as well. Same thing with Atavola, same thing with Lucia's. You know, you you span the gamut, all the restaurants do takeout business now. That's, you know, the restaurant industry, and I don't, you you can tell us, that's where it's headed, right? I mean, you got to do a lot of in-person, but you also do a lot of takeout, whether it's Scrub Hub, DoorDash, any of those businesses, or people calling directly. So, you know, maybe it's a takeout restaurant after five or six, but other than that, I I really don't see that we make this a permanent takeout spot, even if it's for a temporary basis while construction's going on at this point in time.
Hey, Rich?
Yes.
Hey, Rich, so I just want to basically agree with you on that one. When we take the vote, if it's coming as it is, I'm gonna vote no. If we change it to five or six o'clock, I think I'm in favor, but fifteen minutes is fifteen minutes. And I don't think it needs to be restaurant-specific, so I just wanted to echo, I'm I'm in favor of Rich's position on this one.
Okay. And then, I don't know if we want to look at those other signs, and maybe we make those after five. You know, the Lucia's one makes, you know, by Lucia's and and Converse Place and and China Sky. I mean, that sign makes no sense, you've got a thirty-minute parking sign on top of a fifteen-minute parking sign. And it's, I mean, I, I couldn't make, if I tried to enforce it, I would not, wouldn't know what to do there. So, I mean, maybe we need to look at that as well. And the one in Alini's, you know, maybe it's just fifteen-minute parking outside there. Again, to your point, though, it's hard to enforce, so.
So what, so I'll I'll move that we support a changing the sign on Thompson and Waterfield in front of Black Horse to a fifteen-minute takeout-only sign after 5:00 P.M. I I actually think that's what's on our agenda, I don't think we can actually do more than that based on what's been noticed. So that's why I asked initially, so I think that that, I think that's a fair compromise here. And I think with the other signs, I think we leave things the way they are. One of the hard things is people get used to signs being in an area, and then they make decisions based on that. You know, if I'm gonna order from China Sky, or I'm gonna order from Lucia, then I know I can at least swing by, park in that spot probably, and get something. So, and then we can review these, you know, when we review our licenses and see if there are changes. We originally had identified takeout spots, there was one in front of First House as well, and this was COVID-related, it was directly related to the fact that a lot of restaurants were only take, were only open for takeout, you know, you know, ordering online and then picking up at the front door. So you'd have a lot of that in those areas. So, and I think it's fair, as I said before, from from Jim's perspective, at least for the period of time, that the construction is impacting the Black Horse Tavern and Karma and those restaurants around there. So, so I, my motion is the first part, not everything that followed after, so.
So, just so I understand, just so we're clear, so are we gonna have the fifteen-minute parking sign, and then under it have fifteen-minute parking, I'm assuming, takeout-only parking after 5:00 P.M.?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Change the sign.
Oh, we have two signs, like, these other areas have two signs? Because I think, I think if you read that, I think it needs to be two signs like that. So we have fifteen-minute parking, and then fifteen-minute parking takeout only after fif, six, 5:00 P.M. Because I think at that point, you know, if it's not after 5:00 P.M., someone could park there for an hour, two hours, or something like that. And it kind of eliminates the whole purpose of having the fifteen-minute parking sign there.
Fair enough.
You can leave the fifteen-minute parking and then the curbside parking after 5:00 P.M.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, however it's done.
Others, what do you think?
I mean, I I'd like to just head a sunset at the end of the construction period and revisit all all of those signs in the town, to Ben's point, to make it seem above the equity of it. You know, so we protect it, we need it now.
So, so I think, you know, to that point, John, I was gonna say, I think we really need to, we, you know, we had a lot of momentum going with Tool and this Downtown Action Plan and the park, mini parking study they did. And, you know, we haven't, just because it's had a lot going on since then, is we really need to get back and get in front of the business community about this, you know, whole parking plan and seeing if people, you know, what the appetite is for that. Because, I mean, that's, I mean, that's their solution. I mean, that they're saying, you know, target targeted shopping in that area until, you know, five, you know, 5:00 P.M., that kind of stuff. And then afterward, and that's when you're enforcing it. And then it also involves, you know, giving our our parking attendants, on parking enforcement officers, technology to be able to quickly, you know, rather than writing down, they're quickly, you know, they have a handheld, you know, to to kind of help them with that process, to make it, you know, much faster. So, but I think we really do need to start that conversation and see what people think of it. I mean, you know, go from there. That's to your point, and I think that was the idea, was to get that in line to coincide with, you know, when the station was was being done, so.
And we, you know, we'll get Lareway Road back as well, I mean, there it's, there's gonna be, it's not just the the stoppage of the construction, but it's, you know, a lot of spaces that are right there.
Someday.
Yeah, I'll see when I, you know, I'll leave when I see it, but.
I think, I think this is reasonable, as we look at after 5:00 P.M., what this does bring up to me, especially in talking about Thompson Street and thinking of the businesses at the other end of Thompson Street, which are, have one, two, three coffee shops in a triangle there, is that that is also a place where there's a lot of illegal parking and quick running-in parking. So as we think about this thirty-minute parking, or like, being considered of the other types of businesses that, where we're, where there are potentially hazards in street crossing, because people are just running in real quick, so I'm gonna park on the crosswalk that kids are gonna use to walk to school.
Yeah, sometimes on that corner from Starbucks, I mean, you can't even get through because somebody's just running, right? You just, you just have to wait until somebody gets their drink and comes back out, and then moves their car, and they kind of pull it to the side in a way that, you know, seems like they're not blocking traffic, but they are. And and especially that area, there are a lot of kids, when school lets out, just, you know, not paying attention and and running around.
Okay. So is there consensus on this? I mean, I think to your point, that's fine, I mean, the sunset, you know, till construction, and we revisit. So do we have a motion?
I made a motion.
Did you make a motion already?
Yeah, and then I I talked for about fifteen, twenty minutes after that, so that's what happened.
So the motion, just so I understand, the motion, it is to add to the fifteen-minute parking sign that's for that space, a fif, a fifteen-minute takeout curbside pickup only spot after 5:00 P.M.
Yep.
Do you want it to say curbside pickup? I think you just wanted to say takeout, right? Because curbside pickup would mean that somebody would have, bring it out to your car, right? I think, I think what you want is just a takeout spot, right? Consistent with the other.
Curbside doesn't matter, you know, only the other.
So just say takeout.
Fifteen-minute takeout only parking after 5:00 P.M.
Yes. Is that clear enough?
Takeout food, or?
Well, the other signs that are out there today say takeout
Curbside pickup.
Curbside pickup, so I guess we could just be consistent with that after 5:00 P.M.
That's what I would be consistent with. Okay, so that's the motion on the table, and is there, are we gonna, you know, until the MBTA project is done?
No.
The area impacted by the, you know, because it could be that Lareway Road opens up sooner.
Right.
Yeah, so it's it's
Till the project is, till the station is open.
I'm sure. Yep. Yep.
That area is not impacted
Yep.
by construction, so whatever.
Yep.
Alright, so is there a second to Mike's motion?
Second.
He has seconds it, so I'll do a roll call, the, John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Alright, so that will conclude that hearing.
Can I say one thing about the parking?
No. What?
I would say that it is. Build the wall, the retaining wall, all the way down to Genfield, you get two hundred more parking spaces. They don't have any to get us. Yeah, well, we did it to park them. They want to sell land.
Yeah.
Not so much as I do. You get two hundred parking spaces all the way down. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, it's nine ten, and we've just finished our public hearings. Erica, we'll bring you back up to now talk about more parking in a town earmark.
So Erica, on that presentation?
I don't have a presentation for this one, thank you.
You'll show them the thing.
I mean, I guess you could pull up the materials and have those ready? The material, oh, if you have your packets, then you probably have. Right?
Yeah, because it would be the, the old, these old ones, when you have that main, like the center.
The scope and fee proposal for for downtown Main Street project.
That is available at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, it might be good to pull up the, just the aerial of the study area would be great.
It's all yours.
Alright, let's see, sorry, delay?
I can start just by giving you a little bit of background. So we hired Tool, I don't know, Eric, was it about two years ago now, to kind of look at traffic and pedestrian safety throughout the town center. And they put together a really nice plan, which was included in your pack, in your packet, that showed a variety of improvements we could make at the Rotary, on Main Street, potentially on Thompson Street, and then also at the intersection of Thompson and Waterfield. As I mentioned before, we were the very grateful recipients of a half-million-dollar earmark, and we are working through the paperwork with that for the state. So we're at the point where we're ready to sign a contract with Tool to get the the design work underway. We're not able to design everything, but we've kind of prioritized the the pieces that we thought were most important from that plan, and I'll let Erica kind of go over those elements. But before we did sign that contract with the state, I wanted to bring it to the board just to make sure we're all kind of on the same page in terms of what what the scope was for the work that Tool would be doing. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much for that intro, and thank you for setting this up for me. So, yeah, the action, the Downtown Improvement Action Plan was submitted actually last year. And the reason we called it an action plan is because we didn't want to just have a plan that sits on a shelf. I know that, you know, Winchester really doesn't like to do, to spend money on things that just kind of sit there. We wanted it to be an action plan for for the downtown, which I'm excited to see this thing moving forward. I don't have a formal presentation tonight, this is actually my colleague Karen Fitzgerald's baby. This project is really a streetscape project, will be landscape architect-led, which I think is going to be really beneficial to the Main Street kind of fabric for for downtown. So I can pull through some of these, but I don't want to distract people with this images either. I think Beth already kind of covered the areas that we're gonna be working on for part of this project. It's a streetscape project at its at its core. Main Street from Mystic Valley Park Main Street from Mystic Valley Parkway to the Quill Rotary is the kind of the key key part of the project. And then we're kind of also gonna prioritize that triangle that we all just kind of talked about. It's kind of a funny layout that could use some attention and and be a lot more beneficial to the to the area with some work we do there. Should I pause?
Nope.
Um so the scope of services, uh I'm just gonna read off my screen here, includes topographic survey. So surveying the entire uh study area that we just referred to, Main Street, the entire Rotary, um kind of Thompson and Waterfield, that that triangle area. It's gonna include um lots of public outreach, as we know, the downtown is very important to, uh you know, business owners and residents in town. So we've got a whole host of select board meetings, public meetings, uh T-TAC meetings, things of that nature to cover. Make sure we get this this done right. Schematic design, design development, construction docs, so go all the way through cost estimates, plans and specs, uh bid package services, everything like that that you'll need. Um this is also gonna include some of those initial services that are really important to make sure that the product is feasible. So that will include soil soil borings, environmental permitting around the middle pond, um some structural kind of checks on that on the bridge there. With the the vision being uh narrowing the travel lanes a bit on Main Street, we will be maintaining parking, which is very important. But as part of that, we're gonna be able to widen the sidewalks quite a bit. And we're actually hopeful that we would be able to accommodate some cafe space on the sidewalks and be able to avoid kind of taking up some of those parking spaces for um for dining as you have today. So those kind of the initial, the benefits that come along with this this project. So um I think a big thing too, I would just acknowledge that the Rotary um is, you know, a really challenging place in town that I think has a lot of potential, particularly as a pedestrian crossing some of those kind of legs on it, making sure that visibility is is as strong as possible so that um people, you know, see see you when you wanna cross the street and you feel more comfortable and safe kind of navigating that Rotary Rotary on foot. So I'll pause there and I guess just open it up if there's any questions about the scope of the project.
So so the one question I had is, what is this, is it, are we doing Thompson Street and Main Street? Is that the?
No, so it's it's the it's a Rotary piece.
Yep.
It's the mains, from the Rotary down Main Street to the bridge, so that's the channel, the sidewalk widening project, plus uh looking at putting two raised crosswalks, one at Starbucks C V S and then one at the um bank, uh kind of ice cream shop end. We are not, there was a lot of conversation in the original plan about looking at different ways to improve Thompson Street. That is not part of what we're doing, however, we are looking at the intersection of Thompson and Waterfield because that we heard tonight, it's um a place where it doesn't feel safe to cross there.
Yeah, and we had a little bit of extra funds honestly as part of the the award, so we're able to kind of add that on. So it was one, two, and four on the screen there, two is.
So four, I just wanna be clear, cause I feel like I know this project, I see, the the four is the is outside the Black Horse Tavern and that outside of the post office, that like reconfiguration of, I think we call it Thompson Street Plaza or something like that.
Yeah, we called it the triangle in here.
Okay, so that's.
Keeping the mailbox, most importantly, we're keeping, never do, we're keeping.
Yeah, and we actually, I think I think our language was we're looking at opportunities to add more parking cause it's just poorly laid out right now, I think we're gonna be able to add like four spots.
So that was it, we I think we're adding eight parking spots the way by changing.
It's a slam dunk.
Yeah, exactly. We'll have all the takeout spots in the world, so.
When you look at our downtown, it feels like it's in, you know, five different countries because it's all cut up by the railroad. And so we can't put the greenway in, right? Too many.
Big dig two.
Way when we conceptualize this to make it feel more of a fabric versus a road.
So I can, so this was an idea that we had in there. Um I think if you're referring to kind of those railroad bridges that, you know, Mike was saying drip on you or.
It's just like, you know, you you go to Joe's Pizza and, you know, I'm gonna go there, maybe the Bruegers or to stop.
Yeah, the north side of Main Street versus.
And then I have no other reason to move. So then I'm downtown, I have like, you know, warm experience because I'll be getting coffee or having dinner or whatever the situ- situation is. So when you look at this, and I know this isn't you, it might be the, someone else.
My landscape architect.
Or who are most of us are just talking. This this must be a fairly common current.
Oh, absolutely.
And you did it together a little more, and maybe like, no, you can't do it because there's too many physical barriers to doing it. That might be just what it is.
So that we spent years talking about that on the MBTA project, right? But we, you know, we were trying to get a set of ramps and stairs on the other side of the Rotary, like on that kind of Bruegers end to try to feed, to bring that more pedestrian traffic to that end from the commuter rail. It, yeah, we went round and round, uh as Mike knows, for years on that.
Several charrettes from architects on um underneath the bridge at that um that intersection, at the Rotary, right? To to re-envision that with, you know, things like this, right? Because it's, um I think lighting is is something that we can do a better job of and certainly, um, you know, working with the cultural council and getting some some art and getting something that's more visually appearing uh appealing. Because um uh when we initially did the, um this was several years ago, I don't know, the um study, that's exactly what um, you know, came out of it was that there, there's no way for you to walk from place, you're only walking to one place and then walking back. And um and that's that's hurts our our retailers probably more than more than anybody, so.
But yeah, that is certainly something that, you know, through the public process, we should be talking about, absolutely.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
I was just saying that no real action needed, I just wanted to, before we, you know, sign a contract with the state and enter into a contract with Tool, I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with the direction we're moving. This is gonna be a really exciting, large initiative for the town, so I think it's, um, yeah.
I should have mentioned, it's a sixteen month schedule is kind of roughly what we put it out there as well, so. There'll be a lot of opportunity, I'm sure. I will be in front of the board quite a bit over that over that time period.
Great.
To continue this conversation.
All right, anything else for Erica? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one um consideration as we talk about like widening sidewalks and and changing, as I know, I'm actually looking at like a overview on my maps and you can see there's a lot of red, which is the the brick around.
Uh huh, yeah.
Um but from an accessibility standpoint and from a my experiences with strollers and with small people who run in rain boots and. Sometimes the brick feels like it's not the, you know, the the most accessible walking, you know, surface for people who have mobility issues. So also like this is something that is put into consideration as we start to to go down this path of how can you make it, you know, easy for someone to navigate around the center as well.
It absolutely will be part of the conversation and I think it could be a hot button issue, um but we'll see. And we will certainly be coming with recommendations around that. I mean, I think an a compromise potentially could be having a a more accessible kind of concrete sidewalk path that's, you know, the five feet wide, and then you've kind of got, we're gonna have a lot of fun space to play with with, you know, seating and lighting and um trees and things like that. And so you could have a brick kind of along the edge. We'll come with, you know, photos from other places that are doing it well and kind of see if people, if that people are open to that idea.
That certainly came up when we did the walkthrough, because even, I think we went in the winter, one of the first times that we um we were walking through that area and it was difficult for us to even walk around, you know, um down Thompson Street and on the side. So it's um uh I think it it's not just that we haven't maintained it, we have, it's just difficult to maintain brick like that, um so.
It's very expensive as well.
And that was, you know, initially done a long time ago, probably, you know, thirty years ago, I don't know.
Early eighties, yeah.
Yeah.
Good guess.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Absolutely.
All right, at this point, we're gonna bring up uh Eversource for their license agreements. Come on up, guys, sorry to keep you waiting. Thanks for coming back. Sorry, it's been a late night already, just gotta get to a couple of things before the summer, people start going away and things, so.
Thanks for having us.
All right, so where are we at with this?
So since we met last, my understanding is the Conservation Commission has approved the use of Davidson Park for the sort of laydown space to to store your fused pipe that will be um pulled through the directional drill. And we've worked, I've worked with Glenn and the folks at Eversource to put together a license agreement for the use of that space, which includes um payment towards improvements at Leonard Field.
Yeah, we took the uh information that we received from the board last time, you know, we're here, we went back as a project team and discussed the uh the construction activities in Cross Street and our needs in Davidson Park and your desire to have kind of a contribution that could be useful in that specific area, I think identified London Park as the playground. And we came up with an offer to contribute the two hundred thousand dollars towards that project, uh which we, you know, felt would be a substantial contribution towards what you folks might wanna be building over there. And and hoping that you would agree with that.
You know, I think that's great. You know, it certainly gets us on our way to improving that area of town, especially um after this construction. So we appreciate, you know, Eversource, you know, willing to step up and and give that donation to the town to to assist us in that process.
So we modified the agree, another agreement, so it'd be two agreements, one for Washington Street, uh which that was gonna be kept as kind of a separate matter. And then this address specifically, uh put together exhibits and and other materials to go together with the licensing, I think was reviewed by town council. So I'm hopeful it's in a format that's uh it's acceptable to the board.
So let's see, so anyone have any questions about the licensing agreements? Okay, I don't have any questions about the form of them. I have a question, just where are we at with getting this project started in terms of drilling, that type of stuff? Are we still on schedule for maybe early July and that you guys presented?
Yes, we are on schedule, basically, we're just waiting for what you like to pass by so we can start having travel to the ground.
Okay.
Evers- uh Eversource and Mark will have everything in place to start as soon as we have all the permits in place. And so far, the D P W has been created helping us with the permits and, yeah, we're making that list.
All right.
And this agreement goes a long way to allow allows us to do the planning necessary for bringing the outside boring company and and work on, get started on the on the drilling entrance pits and those types of things, so it's, that, this was an important part of it.
My my second question is, as a Rotarian in town, I'm part of the Winchester Rotary Club, they've spent a lot of money on Davidson Park over the years with those benches and the monument that's there and it's dedicated to their first president, um who, you know, under almost a hundred years ago started the club. The question from them is, I know we're moving the benches into storage uh during this project, I think is what someone said um to them. And then there's a monument there, will that be just protected during this somehow? Just like a big stone in the middle, uh that.
Well, you can see on this exhibit, this was intended to be the the kind of the center area where we, we're gonna try to go through through those trees. That clearly identifies it, there's a bench there. I think the the monument you're talking is probably looking a little bit to this side, right? Cause I believe there's another tree over here. And I think that's where, you can see the edge of this um planting area, and I think that's over in this general area right here. Right. And our goal was through the layout that we had was, we picked these two trees as the largest area. It afforded us kind of a the needed turning radius to get into the street. So I believe that after protecting the trees, we're gonna be away from this area. And, you know, we'll certainly protect that, however, either town engineering or or Beth recommends that, you know, if even if it's feel like it's not far enough away and you want something around, we're more than happy to put something around that as well.
Okay, yeah, that'll be helpful, um, cause they told me I can't come back to lunch unless I get an answer to that question, so.
I think we could, you could probably put that orange snow fencing around it just to protect it.
Oh yeah, we can do that, absolutely, there's no question about that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big lift, it's just they were concerned about that and their benches, so.
Yeah, so the one bench will obviously, you know, disconnect, I think it was bolted in place, we'll take it out of there. We'll make some arrangements so we can either try to store it or we can take it over to D P W, maybe they have facility that they can store it or try to work out some of those details with your with your people on the ground.
That'd be helpful. That's all I got, anybody else?
Um I I just wanna add, related to the conversation we had last time, that um uh information came out to a broader neighborhood about this work and about the milling that was done. And also came out through um the, at least the Lynch and Morocco newsletters. And I know that that was appreciated to be getting that information. So I think that's really helpful that people have the, sort of, people have the heads up and people in the neighborhood have the heads up on what's happening, so it's.
Well, it's good to hear that they're, that they appreciate that that extra effort.
Good.
Yeah, and again, I just wanted to extend my appreciation for your responsiveness to our requests. I know this is a a great impact to the neighborhood and it's not your fault personally, but I I think it'll be a good outcome for us to deliver something together as a partnership to the neighbors um over this period of time. So we appreciate Eversource's willingness to to do that as well, so um so thank you. And to the responsiveness that um Anthea mentioned as well, um people getting notified things, um it feels better than, you know, just um driving into it when it when it's happening and um so it it does go a long way. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
All right, so if there's no other questions or comments, we can take up each of the license agreements separately, I think. So there's two, there's one for Davidson Park and then the other one for the currently down area that they're using.
Um so I move the approve the license agreement for Eversource at Davidson Park and authorize the town manager to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
Uh I'll do a roll call vote, um John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh I vote yes as well. All right, and next one?
Uh and I move we approve the license agreement for Washington Street.
Amendment.
Oh, and the amendment to the license agreement for Eversource at Washington Street and authorize the town manager to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Michelle?
Yes.
Well, I vote yes as well. Anything else for Eversource? All right, thank you both for coming in, thank you again for the for the donation.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, good luck.
Is Michelle not on the plane yet?
I'm delayed.
I was gonna say, Michelle, is your flight delayed?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Did you, did you find the food court at O'Hare Airport? Or the bar?
Like an hour and a half ago.
Good.
You could have told us that you were getting on your flight and we wouldn't have known, so we appreciate.
All right, we're gonna keep rolling here, Michelle, or maybe you've got us on wing cam or something as well, um.
I get both, I'm gonna have to drop in about a half an hour, but we'll see where we are.
All right.
We'll just be getting started.
We'll be at item number two.
That's sadly true.
All right, uh Lynch Solar, is it, no one else is here for anything else, right? All right, Lynch Solar, who's here for that? Chris and Jay?
Yes.
Come on up. All right, good evening. So we've got Lynch Solar and we've got the Winchester High School floor on here, it looks like could be both in your realm. So why don't we, uh why don't we start with Lynch Solar?
Okay.
So what's the latest?
So last week, we sent out a memo that we approached uh the E F P B C committee about financing and moving along with the design of the solar system, which passed. So now we're waiting for a change order from the architects to actually incorporate the design into the project so we can buy a little bit of time and also have control of the design of the system, the canopies and and the output of the system. We're not, we're taking out of contingency funds right now, so we don't know until the budgets are done where we're gonna land with this. So we will probably need the money back at some point, depending on which way everyone turns to go with the system. If it's a direct purchase, of course, the money comes back easily. If it's a P P A, it's a little bit around, it would be reduced, you know, they will use the system or probably a good part of it from talking to Select. And it would probably reduce, uh increase the amount of percentage off because we're giving them a part of the job, but that's not a direct payment to the project, so.
So if you remember from our remarks on, what was it, May twenty second, the 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 reason for kind of a June decision date was the architects and engineers just have a lot of work to do in July to make these M S B A deadlines. And so it's like, I presume everybody around the table is aware that uh Select has been engaged. And I think, you know, Ken's been a part, Ken Pruitt's been a part of that as well, almost like a maybe a peer review of the, I don't know if that's overstating it, Beth. So that work is going on right now. So what we, Jay and I basically met with the E F P B C last week and said, okay, um so that nothing just comes to a grinding halt. If the parties are not prepared to make a decision, if we're waiting either for more detail from Zapotec, and they have released an updated report, I think, Mike, you've seen that, I think, Michelle, again, I don't know if the whole board has seen it, but.
I don't know if I understand it, but I have seen it. I have it.
When you ask for more detail, be careful what you wish for. So anyway, that report, you know, was issued by Zapotec, it's like their eighth or ninth, you know, update this time with more detail. Hopefully, everybody's questions have been answered there. Select now is doing their own, if you will, peer review, but it's important to us that we not see the wheels come to a stop. So to this motion that Jay was just describing, we asked the E F P B C, given that the project is tech, we're technically over budget right now. So we just said, well, can we can we allocate some funds from the owner's contingency on a short term basis? Get the the additional services request that Jay described and then let the design team keep moving. Because if they don't, then we start creating those those gaps that we're really concerned about. So anyway, that passed unanimously, so that's good. And they're putting their proposals together now, and then I think there's a meeting with Select, Jay, it's the fifth.
Josh, I just wanna clarify, Select is kind of doing their own, they're not really doing a peer review of the Zapotec, right? They're kind of doing their own analysis.
They have full.
They're basing off the same information, yeah.
Everything's Zapotec and a complete package that they. Everything's Zapotec and a complete package that they requested from the architects, so they've given everything they need, but they are doing their own workout.
How much is the design cost?
We, our motion was to allocate up to $200,000, but that's not based on the proposals yet.
So potentially, at some point, you might be looking for that back from some other source funding?
Or a portion of it back, we'll see. I mean, as Jay was saying, you know, if the project comes in under budget, then it's like, it's not an issue. But if it doesn't and we're tight, then we may be looking to get some of that back. But wait, it's too early to know.
So with this course now, there's no deadline for the end of June to make a decision, right?
This gives you some leeway, the school committee as well. If a decision were to be made to pursue direct ownership, that, of course, we need to know what the funding source or sources are. If there should be any request of town meeting and we had this explicit conversation, was that actually today? It feels like three days ago, it was today. We did have a detailed conversation with the OPM. So we would need to have all votes tallied, regardless of what the granting authority is, whether it's the board and ARPA, or it's town meeting and free cash, whatever it is, that all those votes have to be placed by November 17th, because that's when the contract is being awarded.
We go out to bid on October 11th and award on the 17th.
When does town meeting start this year?
November 6th.
November 6th.
And Rich, we even got into the logistics of maybe where you're headed, which is, this would almost need to be like an opening night of town meeting.
Yeah, we'd have to do it, we'd have to do it as a special town meeting on the first night so that it would close. Otherwise, you're gonna be waiting till the end of town meeting, so it would close.
Wait 10 days afterwards, right?
And we talked about that as well, Beth, we were, you know, the fact that, on the one hand, you have to wait till town meeting closes, you also have that appeal period, whatever that is, seven, 10 days or something. So, yeah, we can't, we can't award the contract if we don't actually have the money, not necessarily in hand, but, you know, the votes having taken place and some assurance that the money's gonna be there.
Okay.
Can Jay just talk for a moment about, though, if that's the path, which, if the preference is direct ownership, and then for whatever reason that doesn't work, whether it's a failed vote or what have you, there's still the PPA option?
Right, and they will use drawings for the most part. So at least we do have control of what it's gonna look like, it's not just a open field to do whatever you want on the PPA, so.
And this will be working with the other, the 5,000 square foot solar array that is part of the project already, or no?
That's, that's in the base conflict, that's happened.
Okay.
That's in the job, think of that as like the doors on the building or the roof on the building.
Which ones, this is the?
The third floor classroom array.
Classroom one, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're talking about the canopy and the roof, right?
Correct.
Yeah, let's think of it as the roof generates like 62-ish percent of what we need, the ground-mounted solar generates the rest, so, you know, this 5,000, and I used to have the percentages in my head, now I don't, it's some percentage of the roof. It's not insignificant, but it's just a slice. What's less clear is if we, if we wait until November, and then the path then becomes power purchase agreement, then there's the whole advertising and procurement process and the contracting process, which we are familiar with, having done the high school MBO, but we lose some, we're less certain that it would all be sort of done and in place by the time Lynch opens, but it would certainly be on a pathway, or one would presume within the first year.
Not to get too much in the weeds on this, isn't it a different process, though, because of, we're part of that consortium? So is it still an RFP kind of process, or is it more streamlined because we're a part of that consortium with?
That's a question for Ken, but from what I heard, it is more streamlined.
Okay.
I mean, we can always choose to go out to bid, or we can use.
It's an option for us.
Go through the consortium, right?
Alright, so what I'm hearing is the deadline for the end of June is not there anymore. So we have a little bit more time to make this decision. Does anyone feel like they're ready to make a decision tonight?
No.
Okay.
Well, I would just add, Rich, I feel like we did this because the message that we were getting is folks weren't just comfortable making a decision just yet. So this is a way to.
Well, that's what I'm trying to confirm with everyone right now.
This is a way to buy some time, this is sort of thinking a little bit out of the box.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I could certainly tell you I'm not ready to make a decision. In fact, to Mike's point, you know, what came in, you know, early evening on Friday from Zapotec, you know, probably raises more questions for me than answers. It's a lot of information to process, and to your point, be careful what you ask for, right? Because, you know, you kind of see the code, you see, you know, what the thinking is. So I guess my next question for the group is, who's analyzing this? I know, I know we have Soltech, is that the name of the company?
Solac.
Solac, excuse me.
Zapotec.
Doing their own, you know, kind of independent analysis, peer review. But who's looking at, you know, the raw data that these companies are plugging in to get us to their, you know, to their conclusions and seeing if those are right or making sense to them from a, I guess, where I sit, it's a financial decision for the town. So who's studying that part? I mean, are we expected as Select board members to take all this raw data in and do an analysis? You know, I'm not a good, I mean, I'm decent with that, but, you know, I'm not, I'm a lawyer by trade, so.
Right.
You know, I, I think that's a big ask from this group. So I'm wondering, is it the EFPBC doing that? Is it the finance committee? Is it, you know, is it the sustainability subcommittee? Is it the energy management committee? Who's, who's taking all this data and saying, you know, from a financial aspect of the town, this is what, you know, we recommend, or this is what we think is in the best interest? Now, if it ever got to town meeting, I assume finance committee would do that anyways, right? Because they do that for everything, they have to take an opinion.
Well, I think to a degree, I mean, if I can, I'll take a stab at it. Zapotec is the solar engineer on this project. They work directly under TAPA architects, and like any other engineer on the job, TAPA chooses their subconsultants. And so TAPA has worked with Zapotec for many years, they have a tremendous amount of experience. You know, nobody on the EFPBC is checking the flow rates of the plumbing engineer on this project. I mean, there's, there's so much quantitative work that goes into engineering that, I mean, I'm not personally checking, I don't know that Jay's checking. We do have some dedicated folks on EFPBC that just did, what do we have, 35 pages of drawing comments on the DD set? You know, but what we look for there is more like general coordination, is scope present, is it missing? Are we double dipping, you know, we're asking questions, we want to be sure the design team is thinking about the right things and the engineering team. But it's not our place to sort of question the multiple engineers on the project, because if you will, that's, I mean, that's their job. And to maybe make even a more sort of silly analogy, you know, we have, you have town council, and town council gives you advice, but you don't have another council giving you an opinion of whether town council's giving you good advice. So, I mean, so no, we don't have that.
So let me rephrase the question, so Zapotec has appeared to give us three options, right? They've laid out, you know, option A, option B, and option C, from direct purchase with, you know, paying upfront, completely bonding that, and then a PPA. And they have, you know, potential savings along the way, right? And they have some assumptions along the way. You know, one assumption they make is that energy rates are only, you know, are only gonna go up 2% a year, right? I mean, which, you know, seems like a big assumption. So, I mean, so maybe our savings are even more if we're eliminating energy bills, I don't know. But someone needs to take that information from the town's perspective, okay? And say, you know, and look at it, you know, financially, what's financially the best decision for the town? And I'm just, so it's not the EFPBC, it's not this board. Is it the finance committee? Who are we going to involve? And that's a question for the group, I guess, who are we gonna involve to do that? Because isn't that the real question here? What's in the best interest financially for the town? So who are we going to involve to make that, you know, to give us advice or analyze that information? Does anyone, I mean, to me, it seems like it's the finance committee, but I don't know who else.
Yeah, I think it's.
What do you think, Michelle? You still there?
Oops, plane's taken.
I'm still there. Sure, I throw a finance committee, but I think at some point, you know, if they can only ask as much as they can ask, we may have to assume some assumptions are valid, or maybe look at some other peer committees. But I would probably pick the FinCom if it's not EFPBC, and I would appreciate that it may not be EFPBC.
Others?
Certainly be partner, yeah, I think that one of, one of the many people involved in this decision-making should be FinCom. Now that we've got a little bit longer of a runway and I think that makes sense, sorry, Anthea.
No, that's why I, I was gonna say, I think that also there's sustainability and energy management, and at some point, they may have some expertise specific to the financing and sort of how that.
So I think, you know, I don't want to speak for Ken because he's not here, but, I mean, I've heard him say that, you know, from a sustainability standpoint, and maybe you two have heard him say this, you know, either option is a net zero building, so either option works.
Right.
So I'm just trying to approach it from a, you know, because the decision seems to be what's in the best interest financially for the town, which is, you know, a lot of our decisions, right? So maybe, you know, maybe it is then, maybe it's not, but, you know, I think at some point, you know, we need to, if it's FinCom, we need to involve them relatively soon so that they can assign a couple of people like they do for everything to analyze that. Does that make sense to people?
Yes, again, yes.
Yes.
Alright.
And I think there already are some FinCom members that have been, you know, kind of participating in this conversation as well, and, right? So, and weighing in, and so, you know, they could hit the ground running as, you know.
And the fifth will prove as a peer review, basically. Select is either gonna come back agreeing or minor changes or disagreeing. But if it comes back agreeing with some minor changes, then it's a system we can turn over to FinCom or a bunch of people at the same time.
So does it make sense for one of the next action steps is to reach out to FinCom? I mean, I don't know how much they know about this project, I mean, I haven't attended a FinCom meeting recently. And, you know, get them, start, you know, processing some of this information and getting up to speed so that they're, you know, since we have a tight runway here.
FinCom's aware of it, they discussed it at their last meeting, but they're not, you know, you probably picked up on this. I mean, the memos that Jay and Mark and I have been sending, we're not sending to FinCom. Mostly just, we're sort of respecting the lanes that we're in and who we're kind of engaged with. So, you know, if FinCom wanted to have like a working group on this, we can just kind of more formally enroll them into this and share the information.
Because I think no matter what, let's say we decide to go to town meeting for a direct purchase, the last thing I want is, you know, us, you know, supporting it and them saying, you know, we, we're not in favor of it, and here's why.
I agree.
So, is that okay with you?
No, I think, I think there's a lot of, and I appreciate all the work that went into this Zapotec analysis, there's just a lot of assumptions that, they made some assumptions on how we would finance things and timing of things coming in that I think are worth discussion, that is important for us to understand, and I think bringing in the FinCom at this point, so that we're all headed in the same direction, should we be going towards a direct purchase at town meeting, that we're all kind of, starting with the same set of facts and everybody's kind of getting the same information along the way, it's important.
My only plug would just be, I think it's important for the board to be just really explicit and clear with FinCom about what it is you're looking for, like in terms of a deliberable and a timeline and maybe a process, because we have a lot of information we can share, but they're not, certainly, I don't see FinCom working in our direction.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I think to Rich's point, you know, if we were to come to town meeting with us and this hasn't been vetted by FinCom and we don't have the, you know, their review and sort of approval in whatever direction it would take, I think that would be sort of risky. So I'd also imagine, we were talking earlier about, you know, November 17th is the absolute last day to know what we're doing. I think if there is a decision to do the PPA as well, right, that would be known in September. Sort of there was an outright decision because we would have to put something onto the warrant for a town meeting.
What is the warrant?
Well, you're saying if the decision were not to pursue direct ownership, yes, yes.
That would be known.
The warrant closes September 15th, but you could always put an article, trying to extend the time, like you can always put an article on and then definitely postpone it prior to town meeting if that's, doesn't go forward, yeah.
I know, yeah, as I mentioned before, I know Brian Vrenelli has been attending the meetings on some of the solar stuff and been, you know, involved as well, so.
Done some spreadsheets and other things he shared, yes.
So, and you probably talked to Brian, I don't know, Chris, but, you know, it seems like Brian would be a good person from finance committee as well.
He's very, he's very interested, I know he's very interested in this.
So, we can reach out, either you or me.
There's a new chair this past week, yep.
Two days ago.
Yep.
So we can reach out and get them, create a working group, putting that together, and go from there. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes. I know what the minutes are gonna say for John Fallon at this meeting.
Alright, so we'll do that and then, you know, reconvene when we have more information. Because I think, what'd you say, I saw something about July 5th meeting with the other company?
We have a meeting with Solac.
So maybe by the 17th, when we have our next meeting, we might have more information, maybe not.
Your next meeting is the 17th?
17th and the 31st.
Okay.
Alright, anything else on Lynch Solar for now, from anyone? Alright, well, I'm glad there's not a deadline that we're not gonna miss, that's helpful. Floor. It's Winchester High School flooring, so we got a memo?
Good.
Yeah.
Everybody had a chance to see the memo?
Yes, it was in our packet.
Yeah, so do you want me to give like two-minute elevator speech?
Sure, yep.
I think some people around the table may be aware, so the high school gym floor, that resilient floor was there when we were doing the renovations. I think it, when it was installed, it was supposed to last, what, eight years? It's kind of like the turf at Manchester Field that we wore out long beyond its life, and.
Sorry, I don't want to, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same issue.
I'm starting with the easier issue.
Okay, you're starting with the gym floor, got it.
So, but this is important because, you know, it has been a problem, so that floor is beginning to delaminate. Our athletic director has been expressing safety concerns for a while. And as you know from, from the memo and others may know, sort of on a separate track, there's been some interest on the part of the district in actually just reconfiguring the gymnasium. We cannot host postseason tournaments in that space, et cetera, et cetera. So some effort was made back in 2017, 2018 to pull something together, that was pre-COVID. They did that full report, incredibly expensive, and, you know, it died when everybody went remote. But the floor continues to, you know, show its age. So the EFPBC had hoped to kind of pull an updated report together and with a reduced scope in time to bring something back to Mr. McPeak and the Capitol folks this summer. But as I think Beth's aware, you know, bond council has basically ruled, now you can't use remaining project funds for that because that scope really was never in the project. So our strategy is to get a proposal together for architecture and engineering services, let the school committee talk about it this summer as a capital request, we'll see where that goes. So, so the sort of responsibility for that has shifted a little bit to the more serious and the much more sort of, yeah.
Can I just see if there's any questions about that?
Oh yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
So just, so I understand the timing, so Capitol, you would be going, this Capitol cycle, you'd be requesting engineering money? And then in an out year, you'd be requesting.
They can't predict what the school committee will do, so the school committee, in other words, will consider a capital request for architectural engineering services, right? Along with all the other capital things that we talked about over the summer. And if it gets ranked, then we would come and see Capitol, you know, this summer and make that request. But that would only be for architectural and engineering.
Okay, so that, in a future, in the next cap, next year's Capitol cycle would be for construction?
We have to get a design and to get an estimate, to know how much it is, and then that's where the dollars really come in. So 1.4 million dollar project, right, back in 2018? Yep.
In 2018.
2018.
Right.
But you know, Mike, you can cut 40% of scope out, but then with all the escalation we've had, find yourself a 1.4 million dollar.
Well, no, I just know that, you know, we have the policy of not, you know, funding the engineering and design unless we've identified the source of funding for the construction, so, and I see Roger's here as well. So I, you know, I don't know if we've done that or if we need to start planning for that now. I mean, you know, especially I've been there lately, it's necessary at this point, it's a safety issue. And it's not an aesthetic issue, which it really hasn't been for a while, it's just, but it's just getting worse and I don't think that we can, we can patch it together, but, you know, so that's, I don't.
Yeah, so my only question, is there any, like, for the turf replacement, there's annual testing, right? And at some point, it's like, you know.
Say that again, Beth?
For the turf replacement, there's annual testing that's done to, you know, kind of get like a safety rating. Is there anything similar for the gym floor, like, do we have it evaluated annually, or is there at some point where?
That'd be a good question for athletic director, I mean, he's had multiple, sort of, multiple folks in who specialize in those services to look at it, whether it's been tested, I can't.
Right.
In terms of resilience. In terms of resiliency, I can't.
Right. But I mean, at some, at some point, we're going to be past the point of no return, right? Where we kind of have to do something.
He already said at the last meeting that he can't have certain events.
Right. I'm just thinking about this timeline, right? If, if we're just going to capital this year for engineering and an out year for construction, we're two years away from replacement.
If I'm not mistaken, Jay, it's sort of like having, you know, when you re-roof your house, you can put a roof on top of an old roof. I think there are two floors there. I think, I think they are.
This was a, this was a patch that was done, a 10-year patch back when they did it.
So we're wearing out the 10-year patch.
Can I just ask a question about the floor you're exploring? Is it, does it have, does it, does the, what you're studying, does it include anything like a hardwood floor for the main court?
So there were a couple of options that were in that 2018 report, and I think that's what Mr. Aria would like to see is, is if we, we got to tear everything out. And then do we replace it with something resilient like rubberized or do we just go in like with wood again? I think that's something he'd like to see.
There was a comment against the hardwood floor with the maintenance that's involved, but it would, we would have to look at both systems.
I'd look at hardwood from a basketball standpoint. The other question is, you know, it's good to hear that, you know, any of this would involve maybe reconfiguring that gym. The current configuration is dangerous. You know, I mean, I've got a sixth grader who's pretty big and they end up playing on that wall court a lot, you know, because there's three basketball games going on simultaneously. Um, and you're there all the time too. And, um, you know, so changing the configuration, have those courts go the opposite direction, you know, might be just as advantageous for gaming, but, um, not as dangerous.
That's what happened in 2018. They, we were approached with a $600,000 job budget that we could get this done. And by the time we met there and started walking around with the bleachers that had to be changed, electric sprinklers that are under the bleachers, everything else and reconfiguring, that's where it turned into a main floor. So it was the whole reconfigure and everything. There's, you know, the hanging curtains.
So that's part of this project?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's a whole reconfigure, changing the curtains around, um, bleachers, whole system.
And because the curtains now have to be hung on a different line of, um, truss, there's some structural analysis that needs to be done as well. And you have to brace that with Unistrut or something like that. So there's. It, it's a complex thing. Um, it is quite, and Mr. McPeak actually has been on a tour with us. So he's seen the high school gym floor, understands the issues. At the end of the day, what we need to do is replace the floor. I mean, to Mike's point, I mean, it's, it's, it's coming up. It's a, it's a, it's supposed to be a six or eight year patch and it's long past its, its prime. So we got to do that. But if we're gonna, that would be the cheapest option is just replace the floor as it sits. But then Rich, that's with the configuration that we have. So that's going to be the, the tough part is to say, okay, it's going to cost X just to do the floor, which will be hundreds of thousands of dollars, we expect. But if we wanted to turn the room and then maximize and make it safer and get better utilization, we could do that, but it's going to be a lot more money.
So when do we, when do we make that decision? You know, is, I mean, is this going to be part of the?
Nothing happened. So what has to happen, Mike, is the school committee, we, we, we're in the process of getting some proposals for design work. School committee will need to have a conversation about what is that as a priority. And we will bring it, presumably it will be more than $35,000, which is our new threshold for schools for capital, if you guys haven't heard that. So. We, um, if we vote it and it's a priority, it'll come to capital. But that's where Roger and I and everybody else around the table says, okay, you know, are we turning a room? Are we buying a dump truck for, you know, DPW? Are we fixing a roof? Are we repairing a bridge? I mean, it's, it, it, it's going to have to vie for attention like everything else.
And that would be for not just construction later on, but the design and engineering phase would be the first, how much do we think that's going to be or do we not have any idea?
We don't have the proposal, but I expect it'll be over the $35,000.
When do you think you're going to have those numbers?
Any day. Meg is working.
Hopefully within the next two or three weeks.
I have, I have an ask for you. When you.
An ask?
An ask. Just, this is my personal asking. I don't know. Can you, can we get those numbers too? To see what the, can we get those numbers too? To see what the numbers are at?
Sure. I don't see why not. I will say Meg White is an incredible juggler.
We know that.
I don't, I, I say this to everybody when I have the opportunity, but she, she is so critical to the success of this Lynch project. And, um, when things come up like the, the floor that we're about to talk about, because this is the easy floor we're talking about. Now we're going to get to the, the more difficult news. You know, she just works her butt off to make stuff happen and she's tenacious. So I just wanted to say publicly, really appreciate her. We're.
I will second that every capital and construction project that has happened in this town for the past 20 years has happened because Meg has been the one to see it through. So. We're very lucky.
So yeah, we can share those numbers with you.
Thank you.
So that was the easy floor discussion. So.
Can I ask a clarification before the hard, hard floor? You mentioned at the start that the, this gym floor can't use remaining project funds. We can't use remaining project funds.
That's right.
What is the amount of remaining project funds?
Hundred and $60,000. Hundred and $29 million dollar project. We have 160,000 left.
Okay. And so the scope of that is anything that is not the gym essentially?
It, it is, and as we'll, we'll discuss here in a moment, a good chunk of that 160 is now basically spoken for because of.
Good segue.
Yeah, okay.
So we, we last dipped into those remaining funds actually last summer because it's a long story, but for some, for a really bizarre reason, we actually did not have period products installed in the girls bathrooms and we should have. They were in the drawings. They were basically labeled as contractor installed, owner provided, owner being the town. That never happened. So when that was called to our attention, that was, I mean, it's embarrassing because we went so long, but, um, we were able to get on that pretty quickly and did summer work to get that stuff purchased and installed. That's an easy one, Anthea, because like it literally was on the drawings and it should have been on the project. Um, and that was, you know, it was small five figures, but that's the kind of thing we, we typically use that for. And then, um, as some of you may know, I mean, we've had some longstanding roof issues at the high school, some leaks that we've been working on. So we've been using some high school funds to pay for some of that. And I think in some of Wade Welch's time, right?
A little bit of site work.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's like MSBA.
What about them?
That was from MSB, MSBA essentially because that, the gym floor was.
Now their reimbursement, they've long closed that out. So this is, what, what remains is, you know, project dollars beyond their, um. Contribution with the maximum facilities grant. That's what it's called. So it's 129 million dollars and if they gave us 35 million dollars, what's left over, we can spend on the project, again, within reason. But bond council has said gym floor is kind of off limits, which is just as well because of our other more troubling flooring issue. So Jay, we were, I would say we were first made aware, I know last, I would say last year DPW was finding a few cracks in some of the VCT. The hallway I was aware of was the one that goes to the back of the school, um, like, you know, where WindCam offices used to be. I show up for town meeting, I'd use that back entrance because I'm in precinct one and there were a few cracks in the floor. DPW just thought, yeah, it's strange. Why are, why are tiles cracked? They were cracking. They weren't, they weren't buckling, right? Just sort of cracking. And then I would say maybe a year ago, year and a half ago, DPW noticed same thing was happening in the guidance hallway. But then, um, they were beginning to see changes in plane in the hallway itself. Um, and that's some of what I think you've seen in the photographs in that memo. We thought, DPW thought, you know, gee, maybe it's no longer adhered to the concrete. Maybe it's a floor leveler issue. And we authorized, what, in March, April to do some destructive testing?
Looking right.
So they went in there and that's in some of the photos, I think in the memo. They went in and the flooring contractor in a very limited area did some destructive testing, pull up some tile, see what was going on. And, and we actually like got the worst results we could expect because the, the tile is perfectly adhered to the concrete. The, the concrete is just lifting because water has gotten to that carbon steel rebar. And so the, when, when rust happens, if you've had a rusty car or something, you know, you get that expansion. So that can cause some cracking in the concrete. So that's what's happened in that hallway.
The concrete and rebar is original to the 1960 era school.
That's right. 1970 structure. Um, it was peculiar to me too, Beth, that when they pulled up that tile, that there was even rebar so shallow in the concrete. I mean, we would need to look at the construction documents. Concrete is inherently strong in compression, weak in tension. That's why you typically see rebar towards the bottom third of a concrete slab. But there, there may be a reason for that. At any rate, that's what's happening in that, that corridor. Um, and DPW has some concerns. There's a lot of water in the crawl space underneath. They're wondering if maybe there's water migration into the concrete that's getting to the steel. So this has, this has shown itself on a floor that is easy to see because it's shiny, it's clean, it's waxed and, you know, you can see it. Elsewhere in the building, there's a photograph, I think it's in the memo, where you see a horizontal piece of rebar. That's over three feet long. The concrete has, has actually collapsed. That's like a grade beam. It's not actually in that hallway. That's where the A wing meets the commons. So if you walk into Winchester High School, the main entrance, you make a right turn. And just as you walk out of the commons into that hallway, you transition from like a porcelain tile to like a ceramic. Um, that's where that condition happened. And I think what the EFPBC and DPW are really concerned about is not just the damage that's being seen, but it's the rate of what's happening. At that A wing connection to the commons, there was a hairline crack that was observed like in October, November, while they were cleaning the floor. And today, now it runs almost the full width of the corridor. It's no longer, there's multiple cracks, the, the tiles breaking, and that's right above that condition where you see that, that rebar. So this was, you know, the, sort of the spelunking for the photographs. I give Chris Conway and his team credit because they're down there crawling on their bellies to see what they can find. This basically came to the EFPBC's attention in May, I think, May 18?
Right. Same time as the gym, we walked the gym floor.
Yeah. So they're, they're alarmed by what they're seeing. Um, they're alarmed by, you know, the, the rate of decay. Um, so.
How much of the existing first floor, because this is only first floor level, right?
Only first floor.
So how much of the first floor is, was the existing slab that was, or, or concrete flooring?
I mean, the addition, Beth, was really just on the front of the.
So probably nine.
And then the music wing.
So the same problem could be in like 90% of those.
Commons is new, the music wing is new.
The offices are new.
Yeah.
Eighty percent maybe?
Original squares of the building. And we do have a proposal coming middle of the week to have SGH look at this and give a professional opinion.
I.
SGH?
Simpson-Gumfertson-Hager, um, who we've worked with on the high school. Um, I, I call them like the McKinsey of structural engineers.
They did this all in Pepper Bridge over.
Like this is, they're, they're great. I call them like forensic structural engineers. So they're really good, but they're in high demand. Um, I think it's really helpful. We've worked with them before. I think on a roof issue at the high school. Was it roof issue, Jay? So.
They're not the original engineers for the project.
They are not. They're not. Um, I've worked with them before on some healthcare projects and I think very highly of them. Um, so again, Meg has really been tenacious trying to get ahold of them. I believe she connected with them Friday briefly and is going to have a follow-up meeting with one of their engineers who's actually on vacation, but he's going to make time for her like next week to see if they can understand the issue, get out, look at it, put together a proposal. So this is, for obvious reasons, we, we want, there's, the reason for copying you guys on the memo was certainly make you aware of it. Um, it's becoming highly visible, but, um, um, it's got a lot of people concerned. I think the whole EFPBC, I mean, I got like three or four phone calls after the meeting from folks who are themselves engineers on the EFPBC, just concerned that we come up with a plan and do something quickly. So we're doing that. The point that we were discussing at the last school committee meeting, however, is that, um, as, as significant as this is and as quickly as we would like to move. There is no way we're going to get, um, any kind of analysis, any kind of recommendation for a repair, any kind of estimate in time for the summer capital cycle. But hopefully we'll have something by fall town meeting. And this is not the kind of thing where we would want to wait a year so that we could then go into the summer capital cycle. You know, for major work we do on our schools, we'd like to fund it in the fall, um, just because there's a lot of work, again, that Meg does so that things are ready to go in the summer. But, you know, a lot of this remedial work would, we would presume would be during the summer, um, not while kids are in the building. So if we, if, and it's just a big if at this point, we don't know what we're going to get, but if there's a way we can really get to the bottom of what's causing this, number one. Number two, how do we stop it? Number three, how do we fix what's happened? We, we want to get all that figured out and quickly. And to your question, Anthea, so we're, we're going to use high school funds to pay for this structural analysis. In addition, the guidance hallway is in such bad shape and it's, it, it has changed a lot frankly in six months, in my opinion, that we've also authorized, um, um, DPW to find a flooring contractor that could come in and just pull up that tile. Do what we can to level the floor and put down, you know, maybe carpet tile or something, not to fix it, but to make it safer. Um, that would work for, you know, the school year, right, Jay?
Is that being paid with the high school funds or what?
It is.
Chris, have we, um, or Jay provided notice to the general contractor yet?
We really need to hear from SGH to see, I mean, it's 2015, we took ownership of that section. So we have to see what's causing it and then.
Well, presumably, yeah, presumably there was somebody that was an engineer that evaluated the building and said, hey, um, we can renovate this building rather than tearing it down and build a new one. So, um, you know, there's somewhat of a latency period for us to be aware of something and it may have been something that could have been uncovered by the engineers at a certain point. So, um, it, maybe there are more people on the risk than, you know, um, just the town here. You know, we don't, we don't waive, you know, all of our rights once we take ownership of the building. So. Um, I, and my thing is always just providing notice, not saying, hey, we're looking for money now, or we're saying you did something wrong. We're just saying, hey, this happened and, um, you know, we're, we're concerned. Because there are a lot of other, um, projects similarly, you know, around the state and around the country that are renovations, um, like this. But, um, so it is helpful to know if there is a, a technique or something done wrong, but also if, if there's somebody else that should be sharing the bill.
One of our members has been, uh, is a lawyer and he's been handling that, especially with the roof. And he was waiting for this report, but we'll discuss it in the next meeting as to. Be nice to hand them a report saying, you know, this is what we found.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
This is what we're doing.
Do you think this is, do you think this is limited to the first floor? Let me, let me rephrase the question. Is the investigation going to look at other floors as well?
Have you seen issues?
We haven't seen, there hasn't been, so the flooring failure that we're seeing is because of either rust jacking right underneath the tile, which you have pictures of in people's hands. Or it, the flooring failure happens to be above grade beams where concrete has collapsed from the rebar that should be acting in tension. So there's movement there and these are rigid materials. So if there's movement, um, you know, they're, they're going to break. So there's, we haven't seen that anywhere else in the building. And in the instances where you've got the flooring failure, so far DPW has been able to find a corresponding deterioration of the structure. So that's not happening anywhere else in the building. That's what I can tell you. Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Because the concern we have is, um, there is a lot of the building that has some crawl space underneath it. Or is this just the canary in the coal mine? Are we, are we just kind of beginning to see some flooring failures now and there's deterioration elsewhere that nobody's aware of because there's beautiful porcelain tile on top of it? So that'll, I think, all be part of the conversation with SGH and I think the whole committee really wants to, as best we can, get into some of those spaces and really take a look and see what it looks like.
And we're not going to be sending staff into those crawl spaces anymore, right? I mean.
I think staff took some amazing photographs, but I would prefer to direct a robot or something down there myself.
Yeah. I mean, especially if we're hiring somebody at this point, we realize the risk is, um, you know, uh, potentially great, then seems like we, we need to not be doing that anymore. Um, but we certainly appreciate the effort.
So this was really, um, so it, it's potentially, it's a very costly thing. And the, the timing, there's an urgency to this. Similarly, although we, we don't know, you know, sort of the scope of this, but you know, you, you saw some mention in the, in the report to another system at the high school where there's, there's some concern as well. And there have been some just further developments there in the past week, um, on the plumbing side that has some concern as well. So again, we're working hard to try to figure out what we can do to get some testing in place, see what's going on there.
Okay. Any good news?
Not yet. Oh, you're, yeah. Do we have any good news? What, do we have good news?
No.
Jay, come on, man.
No, we do have a piece of good news. We have a piece of good news, Jay. So the pedestrian bridge for Lynch is now officially above the line. So the, the, we've got another milestone. What is it? 60% CDs? Is that where we are? So those drawings are done.
The 90 on August 24th.
Yeah. So the estimators met last week to start reconciling their estimates. So we've already committed to doing that pedestrian bridge, which is super important, but at the DD estimate, it was tech. the DD estimate, it was technically below the line, and we've been saying it's gotta be in the project, and so now it is.
Okay.
So is that any good for you?
It's good for me, good for you. Leaving a high note.
It's gonna look just like the one around the corner in front of DPW. We do scope a little bit.
All right. Well, thank you guys.
Anything else you need for, we'll, we'll let you know when we get numbers on the proposal for the high school gym.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thanks.
Looking forward to getting more information.
All children.
Michelle?
Yeah, hey guys, I'm gonna just step off.
All right, thanks, Michelle.
Don't miss your flight.
See you in a couple weeks, bye-bye.
All right. Keeping it rolling here, Seven Church Street.
Yep, so Santander Bank at the corner of Church Street, right across from the town common, is doing some interior renovations as well as adding a ramp to the front of their building. That area right now is all brick, so it looks as if it's all, you know, town-owned sidewalk, but actually their property line comes out pretty far. So the work that they're proposing in terms of the ramp is fully within their, within their property. This has been reviewed by the design review committee as well as the planning board, so they're moving forward. I think they received their building permit. So the reason that it's here in front of the select board is that in order to build that ramp, they're gonna need to take all of that sidewalk in front of Santander, so if you look on the very last page, so basically what they're looking for is to reserve the five parking spaces in front of the bank, and sort of shown here on a, outlined in red on this, in this picture, they'd like to use those five parking spaces to be able to detour the sidewalk in front of their building so they can do the construction.
It's for a month?
That's what the timeline that they have requested is for, yep.
Beth, when will they start?
April twenty-fourth.
I've been down there, I don't remember.
They got a big hole, they cut out the window, they got a big hole there.
Yeah, so they've started the interior renovation, and I don't know, I don't have a date for when they'll be doing the exterior, starting the exterior work.
So, so right now, they've got trucks parked out in front doing the work, and then they're gonna take these five spots. I mean, are they gonna, I mean, is that include the parking or is...
Fifteen year parking? Come on, that sounds cool.
I just wanna make, I mean, that's a busy corner, right, with the bank, the other bank right there.
Right.
And the Winchester Drug, right on the other side of it, so I just wanna make sure there's adequate, minimize the parking interruptions, see, everything comes back to parking. Minimize the parking interruptions as much as possible. Because I know some of the clientele for both of those locations, you know, are elderly and disabled, so we just wanna make sure they're not blocking as far, so. Any questions on this? All right, so we need to approve a staging permit? Do you have any questions on Santander?
So this is, so the request is to bump the sidewalk out into those five spaces?
Correct. The request is to, yeah, use those parking spaces as sidewalk, right?
Okay, and, but, but for an undefined period of time, and unknown when it would start?
So, again, they've been, we've been the holdup here, they've been trying to get this on the agenda for a while, I just wanted to make sure that everything was, from a permitting perspective, everything was set before I brought it to you guys, and they, in the meantime, they've started the interior renovation, so I don't have a date in terms of when they're starting the exterior work, but I, you know, once we give them the go-ahead, if you wanna put a, you know, a month limit on it.
It's gonna get done during the summer, right? List's happening, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's reasonable for you to say that you allow them to use those spaces for the next month, and that, you know, if they need an extension, they'd have to come back to you.
Right, yeah, why don't we do that, and then they can always come back the thirty-first if they need an extension?
Yep.
So the month of July.
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that? Great. Motion? Is there a motion? Sorry.
Yes, is it, is it specifically a license prement, or what is the...
No, it's just approval, the use of space.
Staging permit for Santander, actually for commander builders, builders, representing Santander, to use five parking spot spaces in front of the branch to provide a new pathway. So just, I see what you're saying.
Also, do, do they mean they, they really need five? Those parking spaces there are...
Huge.
They're gigantic, you can even see from the car that's there now, you can squeeze in another half a car.
I don't disagree.
It just seems like a lot, I mean...
I, I think if you approve up to five, and then we can...
Up to, and then maybe our new engineer.
Yeah.
It actually, I mean, those, that's, that is not five spaces that circled there.
It looks like three to me, but...
Oh, that's for the...
Who's counting?
Three and a half, right?
Yeah, including the car, there's four spaces, so it's not really...
So why would we say up to five, and then, you know, we can have somebody...
Yep.
Limited as much as possible, like I said, the two businesses on either side, you know, are, are well-traveled in town, between the drugstore and the co-op bank.
So, I move that we approve permitting and reserve, and reserving of the five parking spots, up to five parking spots in front of the Santander Bank to provide a pedestrian pathway while there's work done on the facade of the...
Through July thirty-first, right?
Through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
It's okay, Patty?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Great, passes. Next up, twenty Glenwood RFP. So has everyone had a chance to look at the RFP?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes to the RFP? I think there's one sentence that I think...
Remove the requirement for three bedrooms and two baths, or whatever it was.
Okay, so we're gonna remove that sentence from the RFP, and then I think it's ready to go out as staff sees fit, and the idea would be, from a timeline standpoint, thirty days for response, that's typically what we do. Is everyone okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
So it's likely not gonna go out until, what, do you think, Beth, middle of July with the kitchen schedules?
Yeah, it's, it's late July, probably timeline, yep.
So that gives us enough time to review it?
Yeah, so are people comfortable with it being due like end of August, or would you rather have it go out later in August to have a September due date?
I would just, I think just thirty days from when you get it out.
Okay.
But every day you get it out, doesn't need to coincide with the end of a month or anything like that. All right, so hearing no other changes to the RFP, is there, or discussion, is there a motion?
So I move we approve that the town manager submits the RFP for twenty Glenwood with, as it's discussed earlier, as discussed to remove the sentence on bedroom size and make a thirty-day RFP deadline.
Second.
All those in favor? Hi. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Next up, communications study plan.
So as we all recall, the communications study committee reported to last Fall Town Meeting, and their primary recommendation was for the town to develop a communications study, communications plan. So I reached out to the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston, and they put a proposal together, basically for three pieces. One is to develop the communications plan, second is to kind of review our website and do a website improvement plan, and the third was a draft social media policy, which were kind of the three, three of the primary objectives that the communications study had put forward. So we have a proposal from them that you all have at your table, so the, the, kind of breaking it down into three, the three tasks, the communications plan is, they have a proposal at thirty-three thousand, the website improvement plan is twelve thousand, and then the draft social media policy is sixty-five hundred. So, I think if folks are agreeable to the scope of work, we can move forward, I just would need some help with the funding of this. We have seventy thousand dollars in the town manager's FY24 budget, this would take up most of that, which, you know, we're always kind of, I hate to use it all up in the first few days of the fiscal year, so...
So Beth, what, what about the Collins Center? How did you find this group? Do they do a lot of this? And have you seen their work products and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so they work for commu-, they work for a lot of communities, I mean, this is what they do, right?
Okay.
It's very similar to, you know, MIPC, who, who does kind of consulting work for communities. They have recently, and I'm happy to share it with the board, they recently did a, a very similar project for Burlington, Mass, and it, I thought it was a really kind of excellent work product, so...
Did you share that?
Sure, yeah.
I'd be interested.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see that, and maybe reach out to Burlington?
Sure.
And see what their experiences were, as well, check references.
Yeah. I think that's great, and I think we should keep moving this project along, so all four, just more just, like you said, just doing a reference check and...
Assuming Burlington's happy with their work, anyone have any, I mean, it seems like a, a big scope and a lot of hours, so I mean, it's a little unclear right now from just reading the report of what the deliverables, deliverables will be, but certainly, you know, paying the right direction. I guess, I'd be interested to see that report, I guess that's, I'm just trying to envision the, the deliverables, but I, I think it makes sense.
So if you want, we can punt it to the next meeting in terms of the financial piece, and I can share the plan with everybody.
You could do that in the interim, right? And, and maybe check with Burlington, let us know what their, their feeling is about it.
Yeah, my only, you know, recommendation would be, you know, I see that part of this is to draft a social, you know, media policy, I mean, I, I would, I'd rather see a social media plan, you know, more of that and less website improvement, because I think that, you know, my experience has been that people engage less with our, our website, and, you know, municipal websites, you know, in general, unless they're looking for something specific than they do with, with social media, and so if that's something that can help us, you know...
Yeah, no, I think that's definitely part of the overall communication strategy, the, the social media policy is more in terms of how staff and elected board and committee members utilize, like, the, kind of the boundaries and rules around how we utilize social media in terms of commenting or that type of thing, so. That would, you know, obviously they'll be drafting something, and then there'll be kind of our town council involved in that overall conversation about whether, and if, if that's not something, that, that was, you know, part of the recommendation for the...
No, I'm just wanting to have those three signs that we're gonna have around town, what hap- what happened to those things?
Uh, so the Mott Grants haven't been awarded yet, they've been pushed back to July fifth.
Oh, okay.
Just run that up to that.
I know, it's one of your favorites.
Breaking news, they haven't heard yet.
It's too late, John.
I was just gonna say with the, with the...
Tough crowd, tough crowd.
With the...
You have seventy-page reports talking about those three signs.
With the website, I think it's a bit of the tail wagging the dog, like, people aren't interacting a lot with the websites because they're not giving them what they can get with a quick hit on social media, and so being able to, to have a website improvement plan and as part of a communications plan that probably addresses how that can be integrated and engaging and easier to wayfind on there is probably...
Yeah, we heard a lot of feedback from the committee about the challenging use, you know, challenging ways in which our website...
They hate our website.
Right.
All right, so do you guys wanna wait until July seventeenth on this?
We'll get a position to make a decision then, I think.
Yeah, I think though...
Is that okay? Does that hurt the timeline?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, we, we have to give a, kind of the timeline that was set at Fall Timing was for us to give an update to Town Meeting, so I, I think...
Would they, if we even...
We're not, this, we're not gonna be able to get this done by Fall Town Meeting, kind of by pushing this out, but I think we can, you know...
Engage them.
Even if we engage them tonight, we wouldn't be able to have it done by...
I think we are kind of getting closer to being able to get something done in kind of a, you know, five or six month timeline, but I think it's, if we go to Town Meeting and say we're eighty percent through the process or whatever, right, then I think that's a fair report to make, yeah.
We're doing the best we can. Okay. In terms of just answering Beth's question, does anyone have a problem funding this?
No.
You know, alternative method other than making them use their entire professional service budget?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, just give us a couple options when we come in the seventeenth, you know, if it's, you know, what accounts, if it's, you know, ARPA...
Right, so that was, so the two that I offered was ARPA or the hospital gift account, there's, you know, you know, what we have in ARPA, there's a hundred and twenty thousand currently in the hospital gift account, and we've just got the check earlier this week for the fifty thousand dollars for FY23, it hasn't been, hasn't been, you know, put into the account yet, so there is some, you know, some money in the hospital gift account, if that's where you wanted to take it from.
And is any of that restricted that came in?
No.
No, that goes, so there is, some of it is restricted, that goes to the, kind of the general fund, and then there's the piece that goes to your dedicated gift account, which is the fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I have no problem with funding it, so...
Okay. All right, so we'll get that information and make a decision the seventeenth. All right, CPA update, so, you know, it's been a little while, I know Mike and Anthea are working on this, kind of leading the, the charge, and I mean, it's a priority for the board to see the CPA passed in this town. I think the question, you know, we've talked about it before, is, you know, if there's a committee to be formed to study, you know, what exactly are the pieces, you know, what are we looking at actually implementing in Winchester, whether it's, you know, one percent, three percent, you know, what's the rate, you know, how would it function, you know, maybe studying other towns? So I guess the question is, you know, here we are, gonna be, their next meeting will be July seventeenth, and then, you know, I would imagine we would want something, at least a progress update to give to Fall Town Meeting before we bring it to Spring Town Meeting, just to get people starting to think about this. So where are we at with that process, and, you know, what do you think the next steps are? When would we form that committee? Kind of just like a roadmap of how we see this campaign playing out, and I know we don't have a, all the details, I'm talking, you know, just from a timeline standpoint, that we would wanna have a committee in place and working on it, you know, by, you know, beginning of September or, or August or something like that, or, you know, maybe it's December, I have no idea. So I'm just trying to just figure out, you know, we talked about goals last week, and this is, you know, I think a collective goal, you know, was to kind of evaluate this process at the very least, so, you know, what are our next steps? And, you know, where do we go with it? I'll leave it to Anthea and Mike to maybe start the conversation, since you guys are closest to this.
Yeah, no, thanks, Rich. You know, we've been meeting with just a, a small cohort of, of volunteers to pick the brains of communities that have been successful and look at their strategies, and we're really targeting probably something more formally to present to the board at our, at our next meeting in the seventeenth, as far as a more specific timeline, and so if we could have some time on the seventeenth to, to do that, maybe a, a, a short PowerPoint presentation, and, and, you know, our goal is to really start this campaign really towards the September, beginning of September, and it's a, and I mentioned it last time, it's, it's more of a, an outside in process, what we've heard is gathering stakeholders from around the community to work with us and form this committee, rather than saying, hey, a bunch of town government, you know, representatives recommend this, everybody, you know, jump on board, so, so that it's gonna, our, our plan is to, to really do a big pitch, certainly at Fall Town Meeting, but really, you know, work through the school organizations and other stakeholders to kind of develop some momentum, so everybody will be sick of hearing us by the springtime.
Rich, I mean, Mike...
They won't be able to say they weren't, they didn't hear.
Right. Mike, is there someone at the state that can help facilitate this?
Yeah, so we've been working, it, with the...
CPC?
The CPC, which is the Coalition for the Community Preservation Act, so they work with each community that is just gonna put it on the ballot, and they provide support, so they have been enormously helpful to us, and we're, we're following their lead, they've got a blueprint of what is successful and, and things, some of the things that surprised us, but part of this strategy is built around their recommendations, and they're gonna be working with us, you know, along the way too, so, so that's, that is gonna be helpful, they're not necessarily state level, but they are an organization that's been providing technical support, so...
And their availability and kind of scope to support us falls more towards the, once And their, uh, availability and kind of scope to support us falls more towards the, once we're getting it on the ballot versus where we are right now. So the idea right now, as Mike is saying, is, is really to begin that engagement and bringing in of people who are supportive and can help to, um, go into the weeds on what, um, what do we need to look at? What does CPA mean for us? What, what are the types of projects? What does it look like in terms of that one percent, three percent, whatever rate? Um, things like that. And then being able to, to ramp that up and to do engagement work and get that to our town meeting voters. Um, and obviously, you know, get other folks aware in that time period, but get that to our town meeting voters as we go to March and then the, um, CPC is really able to step in once that vote has been approved and help us.
So on the seventeenth, do you envision, you know, us kind of voting on or just giving consensus on, you know, what we think like a committee should be or like a pathway or how do you, or just an update? What do you, what do you guys wanna see on the seventeenth? Just so, members.
You're just gonna have to wait and see, Rich.
That's fine. I just want, the only reason why I ask is do we want members to start thinking about, um, you know, who they think, what stakeholders they think would be appropriate for such a committee or something like that? And come to that, come ready to discuss that at that meeting or, or is that premature, you think?
That might be premature.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think if we were.
So we have seventeen thirty-first and August fourteenth.
So I think if we were to aim to have that committee in, in place such that their work is beginning in September, so we're not sort of hoisting work to people and they might be trying to enjoy their summertime, um, so taking the thirty-first or the August fourteenth meeting to be able to say, um, you know, this is, this is what we think and to be able to appoint some folks and then have that work kind of kick off by them.
Okay. All right, sounds like a path.
Like I keep saying today, it's still June, but the summer's already over.
Don't say that, it's just beginning. Come on, people.
On to the next thing.
Don't, don't ruin it. Um, all right, so seventeenth, we'll have a, an update on that. So we'll put you on for the agenda for the seventeenth. All right, next up, town council contract. So everyone in their packet received an updated, um, contract for town council, which expires at the end of this month. Um, it is, um, so Me Talerman has offered the same exact contract that we have in place. They've just changed the dates, uh, for a year. They haven't raised any rates or anything. It's exactly the same services we've been getting for the last year. Um, and, um, you know, they're willing to do the same exact thing for next year, uh, through, uh, starting July first through, uh, June thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, so, um, you know, I think we've, you know, um, I think they're doing a good job. Uh, I think, you know, like any new relationship, there was some, um, you know, learning curve for them to learn the town, us to learn how they do it. But I think, you know, over the last, uh, you know, several months, we've kind of hit our stride, uh, with them. And so they seem to be, you know, um, on a good trajectory. So I don't see any need to change town council at this point or put out a new RFP. I don't know if anyone feels differently?
No, I think Jay's done, uh, and his team's done everything that, uh, they advertised in Warren. So I think he's been, been great. I enjoyed working with him.
So I think at this point, you know, we'll renew their contract for the year, um, unless people have other suggestions.
No, sounds good to me.
So if there's a motion, we can.
Move that we approve the contract with Me Talerman and Costa to reappoint them as town council, uh, effective July first, twenty-twenty-three through June, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do we need to authorize you to sign that or who signs that?
Uh, might as well.
We authorize the town manager to sign on our behalf.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. All right, uh, last item is we have a consent agenda and a supplemental consent agenda.
If we approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
We approve the consen-, the supplemental agen-, consent agenda for Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Is that everything, Patty?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, WinCam. Have a good night.